Hear me?
Yep, we hear you fine. Thank you. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this Tuesday, November nineteenth meeting. Let's get started with the prayer and pledge this morning if you would please stand. Our Father, we thank you for this day. What a wonderful day you have given unto us. Give us, Lord, understanding and discretion today. For every discussion matter we have, every attempt to decide the will of the people, Father, we thank you for this opportunity and this privilege, Lord, to live in the place called Franklin County. Be with us today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the two of our colonies, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I would like to just say, I actually found this Bible in the courthouse in a basement drawer, and it's pretty cool. It's dated back to eighteen sixty-six. So, we're gonna use that today. Lot of history here.
Yeah.
And signatures of some clerks that held office too. Okay, ready? Say, I, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified
That I am duly qualified
To hold office
To hold office.
Under the Constitution
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And that I will well
And that I will well
And faithfully perform
And faithfully perform.
The duties
The duties.
Of the Franklin County Commissioner, District One
Of Franklin County Commissioner, District One.
And that I will well
That I will well
And faithfully perform
And faithfully perform.
The duties
The duties.
In which I'm about to enter.
In which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
May I just go?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Everybody, please. Yes.
Raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
That I will support, protect
That I will support, support and protect
And defend
And defend.
The Constitution and government
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified
That I am duly qualified
To hold office
To hold office.
Under the Constitution
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform
And I will well and faithfully perform
The duties of
The duties of
Franklin County Commissioner, District Three.
Franklin County Commissioner, District Three.
Of which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
May I just go?
Thank you.
This is the quietest I've seen a board. Guys are really taking this as a very solemn, deep, important business here. I like that.
Use that name. They made me use it. No, it was more than that. Okay, last comments. Okay, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm I do solemnly swear or affirm That I will support, protect, and defend That I will support, protect, and defend The Constitution and government The Constitution and government Of the United States Of the United States And of the state of Florida And of the state of Florida. That I am duly qualified That I am duly qualified To hold office To hold office Under the Constitution Under the Constitution Of the state Of the state. And that I will well And that I will well And faithfully perform And faithfully perform The duties of The duties of Franklin County Commissioner, District Five Franklin County Commissioner, District Five Of which I'm about to enter Of which I'm about to enter. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Maxwell. We appreciate your assistance.
Mr. Maxwell.
Sir. So, we got that fun part over, and the real work begins. The next thing we need to do is the selection of chairman and vice chairman. It usually is a two-year term. You can change that at will. It's your decision if, you know, you guys feel you want to do it again next year. And so, basically, Commissioner Jones is currently serving as chairman. He has no objection to continuing that service, provided that nobody else would like to do it. He has no problem with moving his chair to the left or to the right if you guys would like, but it'll be your decision.
Member of the board, anybody want to be chairman? Nobody wants? Otis, you want chairman? You're good? Commissioner Ward?
No, I thought
Well, that's the case. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we put Ricky Jones back as Commissioner Ricky Jones back as chairman.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion to keep the chairman's position the same from Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
It's not really that they don't want it, sir. It's just they think you're doing a wonderful job.
That's good.
That's what it is.
They don't want me.
Okay, next step is vice chairman. Commissioner Ward currently serves as the vice chairman. She has no problem in continuing that service, unless, as Commissioner Jones, somebody else wanted to do it.
I make a motion that we keep Commissioner Ward as the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion affirmative to keep Commissioner Ward also as the vice chair by Commissioner Amison, with a second by Commissioner Kuhn. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Same apply to you, Commissioner Ward. They think you did a wonderful job. It's not that they don't want to do it.
She's so much more organized than this.
She's pretty organized, that's for sure. All right, is that it for that, mister, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Can I just say something about that? There is a lot, and I mean a lot, of work that goes into being a chairman and even a vice chairman. I mean, you don't never know when the chairman's not gonna be here all of a sudden like that a few months ago. You had an emergency. Here Jessica, or Commissioner Ward, excuse me, had to take over. I mean, you don't never know, you know what I mean? And we've got some committees and stuff, so it's a good job, and I appreciate y'all doing it again, because I know I didn't want it. And, yeah, Commissioner Amison that moment and Commissioner Kuhn's that moment. So, thank you for your service as a chairman and vice chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you for your confidence in both of us.
Always.
All right, next is approval of agenda, but before we do have a motion to approve, we do have a couple of amendments to the agenda.
We do?
Yes, we do. Turner Schuler was letting me know before the meeting that the thing we're doing with code enforcement is actually a public hearing to be scheduled eleven o'clock, or scheduled eleven?
Eleven, eleven AM sharp.
Yeah, so it needs to be changed on the agenda for that time.
Yes, that will be added to the agenda, was my request.
All right. And there was also something else in the Turner Schuler's report that we just had some cross wires on that he put in for information about the C-PACE that we've discussed a couple of times here. And I conferred with him. I would like the commission to consider putting on our agenda for discussion, possible action today, 'cause it's a pretty simple thing, so we don't keep dragging it out. So, that would be the amendments to the agenda that I know of, unless you know of any more.
I have something else, commissioners. On fifteen A, on your, which is under the P and Z report, fifteen A, we're gonna move that to a future meeting. That had a split vote at the P and, PCA meeting. It brought up, there were some comments about it. So, Justin is unavailable today because of a family matter that he has to deal with, and so I am moving that item to a future meeting. So, when we get there, we could just move past fifteen A and go straight to fifteen B, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I do, when we get to that point, I do have a comment on that.
Okay.
If it so pleases the board, I'll be able to make, but we'll do it at that time.
Okay, no problem. The only other thing I can think of that's not published in our agenda, looking at our agenda and the length of our agenda, does the board want to consider taking a lunch break at noon? Because we're probably here way past that.
Oh, we'll be here for a while.
And add it to our agenda now. How do y'all feel about that?
I'm finding one way or another.
Okay, so we will also add that
Okay.
as a time certain thing on the agenda, to take a lunch break around noon and come back at one. All right, with that said, the next thing would be approval of all these amendments to the agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next is payment of county bills.
So move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by two, Commissioner Amison and Commissioner Kuhn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Mr. Rowell, for public comments, I just had one speaker card turned in, correct?
Yeah, let me verify, Mr. Chairman. At the last minute, no one else sent anything.
Okay.
No other speaker cards in-house or on, over, oh, on email, sir?
Okay, so we do have one. Mr. John Berry, please go forward, state your name for the record. You have five minutes, sir. No problem?
Good morning. Congratulations to you newly elected or re-elected commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Schuler. I've got a quick agenda here as far as comments I want to make, please, and I'm gonna start off with the third item, which is technical advisory committee, the TAC committee. We submitted after our meetings with each of you your projects that you had passed on to us. They were then rolled into a five-county project list, and that list is now being evaluated by three outside parties who have no knowledge of any of these counties. We don't even know who those three are. They will come back with a ranking, and then after that's said and done, it goes to the ARPC for the final stamp of approval, then to DOT for insertion in whatever year they can do it. That's an update on that. The second item is, I'd like to discuss is the Alligator Drive issues. First, we appreciate Chairman, Commissioner Sanders coming out and taking a look at these locations, and I'd like to bring it to y'all's attention. One, Harbor Circle's dead end, which used to go to Alligator Drive through the KOA, right there at that intersection of where it curves back towards the old firehouse. There's an accident waiting to happen because there's no directional signs as to who has the right-of-way at that point. I know a couple of times I personally have had to stop and let people go towards the dead end. That needs to be looked at. Alligator Drive in front of the old fire station, it's starting to break up the road pavement. It needs to be repaired. Actually, the Alligator Drive west of the S-curve, if y'all recall, that storm surge backed up in there and knocked out Alligator Drive. A lot of dirt had to be brought in, gravel to put in there. There's probably gonna have to be some type of long-term solution for that situation. I don't, and that's a much smaller right-of-way down there than Alligator Drive itself. The county-owned firehouse needs to be demolished. It's a fire trap, or squatters are gonna move in on you down there. I'm sure the sheriff's office keeps a good eye out for that, but it is deteriorating quickly. County needs to clean up the KOA, if they will, site, in other words, cut it, bush-hog it, whatever, and block off the cul-de-sac for parkers and rock fishermen. No target, item six, no parking signs and no fishing signs should be placed on that newly constructed roadway, but first I'd check with FEMA before I pierce that concrete cap, see if that can be done without us having any liability. Ballpoint State Park, the DEP runs that. They run the trust fund, and they have come in there and done a land clearing under that guise, but also what broke at the same time is the golf courses in state parks. I think y'all should get a letter from the DEP of what their true intention is, so you'll have that later on in your records. Two, last item, but probably the most important, is the EMS issues. We lost two key employees to the EMS, of the EMS group, the latest being Randall Walthing. The first was Louis. They went to Waukulla County. I spoke with Randall, and I heard verbally Louis' reasoning that they left was because of the fact they're not part of the Florida retirement system. I don't understand why the hospital employees are not a part of the Florida retirement system. They are, they have, this started in two thousand and six. Somebody may have some history. You can go back to those minutes, and they'll tell you why they did it when certain company bellied up at that time. The only person on that board at that time that probably has memory of it was Commissioner Sanders. We could move the EMS to county employee designation and place them under FR system, or the employee status is covered by the FRS, cover all costs out of the Weems Trust Fund operations as the current leased, because our current employees are leased employees, and we're paying for them anyway, plus some type of override for all the processing. The only drawback is there are, how many there are as far as personnel issues?
Mr. Berry?
Mm-hmm.
These are very important issues, but are you almost done?
Yes, sir. I've got one more.
All right.
Okay, action needed is wait for Baker-Tilly study. I recommend you wait for the Baker-Tilly study is completed or increase Baker-Tilly's scope of services to make a recommendation based on their findings. Employee car, or employee car and/or employee car rigs, your CPA firm for the hospital, to develop a short-term, long-term cost associated with a possible decision and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
That's it.
Yes, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, and before we leave public comments, I would like to remind everybody that's in the room or attending by Zoom. So, when we do have this public hearing at eleven, you do not have to have a speaker card filled out to be able to speak during a public hearing. Just want to make sure everybody's aware of that and understand and know that they will have an opportunity to speak, should they choose to do so. All right, Clerk Maxwell, we're up to you.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Pursuant to Florida Statute twenty-eight dot three-one, the clerk is to notify the county commission of intent to destroy records. All retention requirements have been met, and the records consist of disbursement checks, bank statements, and journal entries from two thousand to twenty seventeen. I need board action to approve the disposal of financial transaction records which I have attached in my report. This is what I brought to you all a couple of months ago, just trying to clean up and get more space in the office, but it's, all the retention requirements have been met, and just asking for the disposal.
All right, pleasure of the board.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kuhn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. John Solomon, TDC Administrator.
Good morning. Morning, commissioners. How are y'all today? Good. I have a full agenda of action items and one information item. Excuse me. First thing, start off the list is item number one. On eleven thirteen twenty-four, the TDC board voted to recommend approving up to fifty thousand dollars for materials and labor to repair the decking and railing on the two fishing piers at Buddy Ward Landing Park and Museum. And for, to bring to y'all.
Question. Turner Schuler, since these are all just talking about TDC-funded projects, can we do all five of these in one motion, or do they need to be separated?
I think you can do all five of them as a single motion.
Okay.
They're all the same subject matter.
They are. Please read number two, three, four, five.
On eleven thirteen, the TDC board voted to recommend approving the beach park facilities bid for the SGI pickleball court and basketball court, the low valid bid from premier surfacing for two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. This amount will be paid by the ten percent beach park facility improvement funds, possibly over one to two years. Number three, on eleven thirteen twenty-four, the TDC board voted to recommend approving funding of the new batting cage structures for the two new sports arenas, DW Wilson Sports Arena and Kendrick Sports Arena, at up to fifty thousand dollars per arena. On eleven thirteen, the TDC board voted to recommend approving up to twenty-five thousand dollars for fencing replacement on the primary field at DW Wilson Sports Arena. And number five, on eleven thirteen, the TDC board voted to recommend approving up to twenty-five thousand dollars for additional spectator seating, three twenty-one-inch aluminum five-row bleacher sets at DW Wilson Sports Arena.
All right, pleasure of the board.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Kuhn. Any discussion, commissioner?
I just think this is fantastic, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Well, the benefit, to add what you're saying, commissioner, the benefit to our public in what tourist development dollars are gonna pay for in what tourist development dollars are going to pay for, they'll visit, and they might use these facilities at some point, or we might have, you know, some kind of travel ball tournaments, but our residents will be enjoying the use of these facilities every day. So I do think it's very beneficial. Any other discussion before we vote?
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is, on the item number two, for St. George Island, the pickleball court and all that, when is that going to start?
Ms. Aaron should be able to tell us that, because she's actually got on her agenda as well to update us.
We'll wait, I'd like to.
I do not know the answer to that, is what I'm trying to tell you, but Ms. Aaron should know.
Okay.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, go ahead, sir.
The one thing that I have for the information item is the August 2024 collections were $263,694, a 21% increase from last August. With one month left in the fiscal year to record, the total year-to-date collections is $3,398,775. This total has surpassed the previous year's total of $3,330,466. Once September is recorded, the 2023-2024 collections will be a record year in TDT collection for Franklin County. Since we only have about $2,500 left, I think September at least got that.
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
Yeah, so I am very confident in saying that this year, even with the hardships that's been going on with the economy, we were able to increase our TDT collections, which also increases the sales tax in Franklin County, so.
All right, anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Solomon while he's here? Thank you, John.
If I could say, thank y'all for this new sports arena stuff, being able to use this money for things that, not only can we use for sports tourism, but our residents use, is a great way to use the funds, and I appreciate that from y'all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Walker, Williams Memorial Hospital CEO?
Good morning, Commissioners, David Walker.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to just congratulate you all on your appointments. May the Lord bless you more and more in the next four years, and some of you may have two years. I'm here to talk about the ultrasound machine. The hospital board, governor board made a recommendation to purchase a new ultrasound machine. So this machine will allow us to be more proficient, you know, with ultrasound, greater penetration. It will also allow us to have some AI interfaces with this particular machine as well. The ultrasound department covers the hospital ED section, as well as the outpatient area of the hospitals. Meaning that physicians refer to the hospital, you know, for patients to be seen, about your sound tech here. There were some conversations with the hospital board to whether, way to pay for this machine, either out of the internal funding or out of the capital outlay funding. So my conversation with many of you all, you know, I'm making a recommendation that we pay for it out of the capital outlay fund of the trust fund here. We started the ultrasound program, just a quick overview, we started the program back in 2019 from the ground up. That program has seen steady growth, last fiscal year ending September 30th, we seen a 20% increase in growth in that particular program, with the many days that, you know, the program was closed because of natural disasters, a machine that we have currently had broken down. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the purchase of the ultrasound machine at $115,916 out of the capital outlay fund of the trust fund. And just a point of note, that many of our equipments that we purchased, we kind of like wrote a lot of grants, so we really haven't really touched the capital outlay side as of yet, like we used to normally do. But the last few years, we've been writing grants to get equipment at the hospital.
All right, pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a second with a couple of questions.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Krum, with a second by Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I see that the, in the, I guess the contract, has Attorney Schuler looked over the contract, and is okay with the verbiage between the purchase?
Haven't seen it yet. I would suggest the board consider a motion to approve, subject to attorney review.
Okay. Second question is, I see that this machine comes with all the accessories, so like, for example, the wands that they call, or the probes that they call it to do like OBGYN-type ultrasounds and things like that. So this is, everything's included in this, is there, if, a warranty if it messes up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or training, like if the, they need training on the machine, is that included as well?
Yes, yes, that included, yeah, they have training, and there's a warranty in it as well. And then you also can update the machine, you know, just, you know, a few years, you know, if they see something else that they want to do with ultrasound, you can add to this particular machine. And ultrasound, we're going to be very important, and when you begin to look at the healthcare of Franklin County, because, you know, it plays a very important with the ED, and it also plays a very important with the outpatient part here. And like I said, you know, we've been seeing steady growth in this particular program, 20% last fiscal year, and then November 30th, September 30th, and we had a lot of days that we closed, you know, so that, you probably would have seen a bigger increase in that particular program. So a lot of our local providers use this.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll say this, and Mr. Walker, you can attest, I'm harping on you and Mr. Cozart with a line all the time about revenue streams for Weems, and this is a revenue stream, you can use it, it's very versatile, use ER, outpatient, so that's why I'm in support of this. I guess we need to amend the motion, though, to reflect pending Attorney Schuler's approval on the contract?
I think that would, I think it would be appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, one question, Mr. Walker, is there a maintenance agreement?
Yeah, the maintenance will be a part of this, of the fee, you know, what we pay into this.
Is that a, is that, is that?
I mean, like a warrant, meaning that they come out and check, you know, they'll come out and check the machine, you know, to make sure it's running well, you know, on a yearly basis.
Right, is that, is there, do you know a timeframe on the agreement? I'm sure it's not forever, is it a two-year agreement, is it a five-year agreement?
I think it may be one year.
Okay, that's fine, as long as we know going into it what we're looking at.
And this machine also, you know, we did the numbers, you know, the return on investment, your investment would be, within two years, you know, we'll pay for this machine back, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. David, have you got this machine where it can be mobile if it needs to?
Yeah.
Pending that, we're looking at other options for the hospital and all?
Yeah.
And make sure it can be mobile, or where we can use this machine in any building we have out there?
Yeah, yeah, this machine would be mobile, meaning that, you know, if we build a new ED, whenever that may happen, you know, you can, you can move this machine to that location. And most of our equipment that we're looking at now, you know, that, what we buy, you know, the idea is that, to be able to move that. And the reason why I'm saying this now is that I'll be back before you within a month, because we, we're going to move, we're going to buy a new CT machine, renovate my office, but that machine also can be moved to a new facility.
I just wanted to make sure, and thank you for bringing this up, and thank you for taking it out of capital outlay. I think I was one of the first ones that said, capital outlay, because this is a machine, and it's part of the hospital, and then this is going to make the hospital better.
Yes, it will.
Thank you for doing that.
That's what you have a capital outlay side for.
Exactly, first off, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so Commissioner Krum, you originally made the motion, did you want to amend your motion?
Contingent upon Attorney Schuler's review of the contract.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to make a motion that it comes out of capital outlay as well?
Well, I thought that was as asked.
Okay, all right. I'll amend my second to reflect Commissioner Krum's motion.
All right, any more discussion before we vote? So we're voting to approve this contingent upon the attorney's review, and it's coming out of capital outlay?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
The last thing I want to mention, you know, we know that Randall Waltman has resigned, has taken another job in Waukulla, Randall is here, I wanted to come up. But to let you know, we also have plans, you know, to fill that position. And so, this is around the last meeting, Randall has been, has been with Weems for a number of years. You know, of course, he only been with the, the rect, a short minute, I call it. But he's been doing a good job, but Randall has a good team behind him, so we, you know, we do have plans to fill that particular position. You know, Mr. Berry talked about the FRS, you know, that's nothing new, you know, a lot of our hospital employees, you know, some of them have left, you know, because of that. When I was with the state, I hired some hospital employees, because, you know, I offered better benefits in retirement. I mean, that's just, that's something that we've been dealing with for years, but Randall is here, as much as Randall.
Thank the board before we.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, appreciate it. Good morning, board, how we doing this morning?
Good morning.
Just spoilers out, unfortunately, you know, I wasn't seeing this coming. This, obviously, was kind of new to me as well. With the first of November is whenever I actually applied for the position, and it went really fast. But yes, I am, you know, seeking employment in Waukulla as of December 2nd, and I have 10 years in FRS, that leaves me 10 years of high risk left. And, you know, the ladder to climb there is a little bit higher, so that I will be able to advance potentially in the future. We do, you know, as I told y'all a year ago, sitting here, when I came into this position, we've built Franklin EMS under Weems to where it is today, proud of that. I look forward to the, whoever takes my position, to continue that build, continue working with the citizens and the PR, making EMS vocal, in the sense that we're out there in the community doing things, and just to continue that, and build, build upon what we've, the base that we've put down, as far as myself and Richard Lewis. I, I've learned quite a bit in the last year, working with each and every one of you, and that is going to go a long way with me, as well as the hospital. And it's, it's taught me a great, great deal, and I'm forever thankful for that. You know, and like I said, I wish we had more time, and things would have worked out a little differently, and sometimes, doors open for a reason, and we just, you know, got to take them, and the opportunities present themselves. So I just want to thank you guys, and if you ever need me, most of y'all have my number, just give me a holler.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Randall, thank you for being willing to serve in that position.
Yes, sir.
Not just for yourself, but for the residents of Franklin County, we really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, thank you, Randall. I do, I do, I have brought up in the past, and I know this is not what this meeting's about, but I do want to look at what it would take, because I've, I've been passionate in the past before about bringing the hospital employees in the EMS to be county employees, I think it's only fair. It's a county-owned hospital right now, I don't know how the hospital employees feel about that, that's something that we might, can reach out to them. I know at one time we had talked about it, but I don't know where the hiccup wasn't, and Mr. Berry mentioned sometime back in 1996, there was some issues. I know, I've done my own research and asked people, and I was told, and again, I don't know if this is true or not, but I was told that they didn't want to become county employees, because they didn't want to go under CHP, which meant for them to have to go to Tallahassee doctors. I think they wanted the option to go other, you know, Panama City or some other areas, I don't know if that's true or not, but I do want to nail that down. I know Gulf EMS is on FRS, and they are a county-owned EMS system, but I want to look at both, what it would look like for EMS and for hospital employees to become part. Like Mr. Berry mentioned in his public comment portion, you know, we're already paying for them, and now we're leasing, we're paying a leasing company to pay them, so that's just my thought, I'm throwing that out there. I don't know how the hospital employees feel about it, if one of them here wants to mention, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm just.
You know, I think, Susan Randall, David Walker, I have Courtney come, every hospital employee that I've spoken with want to be in, want to be in the FRS, you know, I mean, everyone, I haven't talked to one that say, no, David, we don't want this. Now, you know, I have a provider that have some years working with the state, you know, but I may, I may lose her, because, you know, she had about 10 years, maybe 10 years to go, you know, 10, so I'm just saying, that's some things that are out there, but.
The most that I hear from the employees at the hospital is, we're county-owned, why aren't we county employees? And I can't say that's going to suit everybody's needs, but the majority I hear, I've heard it for years. And so, I mean, I've been there 16 years, and it's been something that's talked about all the time, so I appreciate that. And I know that most of them will as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I too share your same concern, that was one of the things I had to top my list, what Mr. Berry stated as well. Essentially, you know, our city workers, our county workers, and fortunately some of our state workers, they don't really do it for the pay, they do it for the benefits. We're not giving them the benefits, they're not, y'all not receiving the benefits, which is your FRS, which is the FRS system. So I would like to, I would like to look into this as well. I think it's something that we need to address, if not, we're going to continue to lose a lot of good people, and a lot of our locals are left because of this.
Yeah. Randall is. Randall is.
Yes, yes.
Louis left, yeah.
You know, Randall, someone said they didn't see this coming, I seen it coming.
Yeah.
When I met with you, I told you that, I seen it coming.
I'm going to tell you.
I hate to lose you, Randall, you was good, I saw the way that EMS was, was going. I hope your successor can keep it up and, and do better, because you always really been engaged with the community, not, not just on your EMS runs, but I see more community involvement with EMS under your direction, so.
And Mr. Chairman, just, Courtney, if you don't mind, how long have you worked at Weems?
16 years and a half years.
And you have, y'all have retirement, right?
To a couple of years in.
Yeah.
That's it.
So 10 years.
And I've had multiple nurses leave because of retirement, because, and I have multiple nurses say, hey, I like working here, but I got to have, I got to do things for my family, for my future. And, and the pay, you know, was a little bit better at different places, but most of them say, and they truly, most of them say, if you had better benefits and better retirement, I would be here.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And one of the things that would break your heart, a 50-year employee, 50 years, 48 years, no retirement. You know, so that's something that, you know, I mean, they've been there, sticking it out. Like I said, when I was with the state, I hired a good employee from the health hospital, because I can offer not to pay FRS, and the health, and the health benefits was lower. So I'm just saying that, but thank you all for the support, we thank Randall, you know, Randall's standing on shoulders, but we got somebody also going to stand on Randall's shoulders, and just take EMS to another level. You know, we're a community-based organization, that's my field for the community, so whatever we can do. And I know Randall and Louis, you know, they will still serve as mentors to the people that we bring up, but thank you for your support, we really appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Randall, what did I tell you when you called me? Don't never apologize in life for me trying to make your life better, don't never apologize for that. I'm just sorry that you have to go, you know what I mean? Because you all are good, every one of y'all are good. I saw what that little hospital can do. I think that for you, that's one of the things I brought up when I came back on the board, that we really need to look at, putting the hospital employees, the ambulance employees, ambulance underneath the umbrella of the county. Anything that we can do to make y'all's lives better, because you serve a purpose in this county too, just like anybody else does. So that's the way that, but Randall, I'm going to miss you, I still got your number, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Even though it is a month later when you called me.
Well.
He's a busy man.
That's the story, that's the story, isn't it? He said, Miss Cheryl, call me on October 8th, he said, Miss Cheryl, did I miss a call of yours? This is so funny, I said, oh, well, this is November 8th, I put the call in on October 8th, well, that's a pretty good time, isn't it? But I know, as, as I know, because I live in the woods and everything else, and service ain't good, sometimes you do drop calls, and see, so when I tell you all that I didn't get a call, or dropped call, or whatever, understand that it happens everywhere, because Randall dropped my call, you know? So, I mean, I'm not lying about it. Randall, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, no problem, if it makes you feel any better, I was in Texas hunting, so.
Mr. Walker, just one question.
Yes.
I know you only been CO what, three years, maybe?
Oh, no, no, five and a half, I think, I may be the longest serving right now, but I don't want to say that.
So under your tenure at the hospital, how many employees have you lost because of this, in your exiting views?
We've, I, I don't have the number specifically, you know, but we did have lost a high number. I'm not going to say 50 or 30, maybe like 20%, because some will go to work at another facility, another county office, or health department here, and it's not about the money, you know, they'll tell me, they'll just say, hey, you know, I got benefits, and, you know, I'm going to get in that FRS, and some of them work, they work for Weems, and they are in that retirement system already. And so, I guess as they get a little older, they think about moving in that direction, you know, going over there.
Got you, okay.
But I don't have a specific number right now.
If you would give the information to me later, a later date, but I think the bottom line, if we want to attract and keep a quality care, we got to have quality benefits, and I think we, something we need to look into. Thank y'all, Randall, good luck.
Yes, sir, one more thing, just, just to put it out there, like myself, quality employee, we have attracted quality employees over the years, and we lose them because of these situations. With our partners to the east and west of us, being county agencies, FRS, people aren't driving through. With our partners to the east and west of us, being county agencies, FRS, people aren't driving through. Why? They're stopping. When the pay's about the same, but the benefit's better, they're, we're getting cut off. So we're in that middle wedge that we're just unable to pull. We got the culture, we built the culture. We've got great-looking trucks. Everywhere we go, everybody applauds our trucks, they love them. So we built that culture. We just got to, we got to finish the deal. And I think that's, I think you guys are seeing that, and I think you're on the right path, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
One more question.
Yes.
David, Randall.
Randall.
Who is going to be temporary head of the EMS, or who are y'all looking to to?
Yeah, I'm looking at...
Replace the job.
I'm looking at a person in this, in this department. I can't call the name yet, because I have, I got the doctor eyes and consequences.
But you have got somebody?
Yeah, yeah, I got, yeah, I got somebody that really has been stepping in for Randall when Randall is out, has been doing a good job, that lives in this community. Lives here, you know, not too far. I don't want to give everything away, but he lives in the community here. Which is good. This would be the first time we have somebody that lives here in this community, that is head of our EMS department.
Make sure you tell the successor, we still want the quality care that we receive.
It'll be loud and clear. That's my, I always tell them, just take it to another level, you know?
Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I want to, I don't want to just talk about this. I want to seriously consider FRS and making them county employees. So is this something that we can put on a?
Well, I have some comments, so if you'd like to hold on.
Go ahead, yes, sure.
A few years ago, the previous HR director did a study of comparing, after the FRS system changed, did a study of what they were implementing at that time versus FRS. In her words to Erin and myself, what they have is better than what the FRS system is. So I'm going to just say that and put that aside. That might have changed since then, and maybe we could take another look at it. But Commissioner, so I want to understand something. For months you've been saying you want to be out of the hospital business, but now you're saying you want to make the county, make it county employees.
Well, I'm a word, man.
And we have a process here where we have Baker Tilly doing a study to tell us what direction are we moving forward. Are we, is, are we going to continue to stay in this process? Are we going to lease the hospital? We have all that to consider when we do it. Now, Commissioner Sanders, you remember a while, quite a few years ago, they started to do a preliminary study, and they saw the cost of doing that. At that time, not this board, that board kind of balked, "Oh, we don't have that kind of money right now." It's kind of like paying the pay plan in one year, basically, type of money they were talking about at that time. Again, things have changed, and I know, I mean, if that's what you guys want us to do, we'll invest. We'll look at somebody hiring a consultant to kind of tell us what that cost will be. But I kind of want to get a clear, I guess, direction from the board. Are we going to do this prior to the Baker Tilly report? And if we are, that means are we going to continue to stay in the hospital business, no matter what Baker Tilly report says? We, Erin and I just need some direction here as to which we want to go.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll do whatever the board wants to do.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see anything dealing with it. I mean, I don't see no problem there. You know what I'm saying? Because, yes, we're going to do that, but what we're saying is looking into the FRS system to see what it's going. I don't see no problem there. It hasn't got nothing to make. Maybe we need to ask Baker Tilly, can they add this to one of the?
That's what I was going to ask too.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not going to...
Is it, have them look at that. Have them look at the FRS part of it and see what the cost would be, and see if it would, you could incorporate it in there. With whatever we decide to do, whether we decide to lease it, sell it, keep as is and try to do better, you still got people that's depending on a wage every week, a pay every week to provide for their families and stuff. And I don't see this, I don't see this being clouded up with Baker Tilly. Now, I don't, do y'all?
You don't see what? I'm sorry.
I don't see it being clouded up.
No, but that...
Asking for this.
Mr. Chairman, if you, that was what I was going to say. We're paying Baker Tilly to give us options. This is just another option that we need to look at.
That's what I look at.
So I don't know why we have to hire another consultant.
Oh, no, I mean, we could. That's fine. I said consultant, just in order to somebody else has to.
He had to play that devil's advocate too.
You know, so.
Well, that's fine. But I'm just saying, I mean, that's, that's why we're engaged with them, is to give us options moving forward. And the more options, you know how I am, I like to see it all.
Yeah.
I mean, and show me one car, show me ten cars, let me pick it out, you know?
Actually, it would be good for Baker Tilly to incorporate that into the, the direction that you want to head, and what's good, what's bad, the pros and the cons. Now, I'll say, I hear the FRS system, that's only a part of it. I mean, to get FRS, you have to be a county employee. So there are other things. At the time, as in the pay structure, the more control the county had over the hospital and what they had. So there were different things involved. I'm not speaking in the past. So now with Baker Tilly, we'll have them look at it and look forward, and maybe give us some guidance of how we could move forward, if that's the direction this board chooses.
You want it by motion?
No, no, I could just call Baker Tilly. Actually, I just talked to Baker Tilly.
Okay, I'm just telling you that I don't see no problem there.
You're amending the contract, it needs to be by official act of the board.
Yes, going to talk to Baker Tilly first and then come back for motion.
A motion to amend the Baker Tilly contract to add the FRS scope.
Right, that's simple, that's simple.
If they...
That's what I said, don't cloud it up the issue. Don't make, you know, don't cloud it up the issue of this and make it an unobtainable goal or whatever. I mean, I'm just, I'm just in it, I want to see how much it would cost now. I know how much it costs back then, and it was extremely high.
Yes.
But now we have other funding sources that we can go after if we have to. I mean, I just like to know.
This report you said that was done in the past, you got a copy of that report?
I'll have to look and see, Commissioner, I'll check, because that was, that was a while ago.
That would have been long, damn it.
It's a long time ago.
And that report was done by?
Again, I'm telling you what I know, I haven't seen it to, to tell you where I can go pull that report.
Probably at the hospital.
No, I'm sorry. We're talking about two different things, maybe. There was one point where the HR, the prior HR person had a conversation with Erin, and they compared numbers and sent notes back and forth. That I can ask Erin for that email. What was done about the cost, I'll have to go do some research and see where they, that was, Commissioner Sanders is right, so that was a very, very long time ago.
It was back when Mr. Berry and I was on board.
Could have been Chuck Culver was here, maybe, I don't know.
Maybe, maybe you're right, I'm not quite sure.
We've gone down so many rabbit holes here, I want to go back to the original with Randall.
Yes.
Because I still hadn't, I was kind of, you know, trying to jump in there. Appreciate, me and you've had numerous conversations. I appreciate the service you've provided to the community. You've always been there when I had a question and all that, and again, thank you. And to echo what my other commissioners said, especially Commissioner Sanders. Years ago, when I was younger, my family business, I was watching my dad, we'd have employees leave, and I'm like, "Why are they going here, going there?" And I, you know, my dad told me, he said, "Never fault a man for trying to better himself." And so you, best of luck to you, and we always here. And if we can get this rabbit hole closed up, you know, it might be something attractive in the future, you never know. But, but thank you again for what you've done for the county.
Yes, sir.
One, one final word for Randall. I expect you and Louis to be here at the grand opening of the new EMS building in Lanark.
Yes, ma'am, we'll be there. We'll be there. I'll drag him. One more thing, I just want to add to the comments back and forth with Mr. Morone. We're not, with the FRS, yes, if a new employee came in, like if we got somebody out of high school and they went to the FRS, it is comparable to what we are offered now. However, we're not going to attract new recruits down here. You're just not going to do it. You're too far out from big hospitals. You want the, the guys that want to get put out in the pasture, run the serious calls and go back to the station. So you want the guys that have five, ten years left to come down with their experience to that area. So that is what's going to attract those individuals. I've had several of them within the last couple of weeks that said if we were FRS, they would have come. And these are people that have had experience in Gadsden County, Wakulla County, you know, these bigger places, Leon, that would come down with, to be in the essential pasture and finish out their career, and then that provides you a service that is bar none, because you get that experience of the age. And then as the older ones get, or the younger ones age and get to that point, then they transition down to that lower call volume, higher acuity, pasture, if you will.
So before we entertain a motion, I want to clarify a couple of things. As I understand it, Mr. Morone, one of the things we've asked our task Baker Tilly to do is to discuss with us the different models.
Yeah.
From what we are now to the new model that has been done the last three or four years, the REH model. So maybe those numbers for FRS could be incorporated in those models. You know, I mean, I don't know, they would know better than me, but maybe that's where we could have that conversation. So that, so that we can know truly which model would be beneficial to the county going forward in healthcare, whether it's the current model we have with critical access or the REH model, and how it would affect this we're talking about today. You know what I'm saying?
So, basically making it fit, yeah, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, making EMS and, because it's two separate things. You have to have EMS, you don't have to have a hospital. So making EMS and the hospital employees, county employees, in both models.
Yes, yes.
I'll say it, with and without, in both models. So you're basically getting four models, if I'm understanding you guys correctly.
Yeah, potentially, yes.
Yes.
But yeah, that way we can have it, and we can know how it fits in those models as well.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we truly can know which ones are most beneficial.
Like Commissioner Emerson said, we have, then we have all the cars on the table, and we're trying to pick which one is best. Yes, yes. And I'll tell you, I'm running a reason, I asked for a model, wanted to talk to James first before getting a motion. That's why I didn't ask for it, to see if that is something he would do. But let's just go ahead and get a motion. Let's go ahead. I'll see what Erin has, sir, and get that to you.
Yeah, I would love to hear that, because I'm just trying to figure out what in the world was so much better than what they had, because I'm going back, and those salaries, whenever since I've been here, and y'all all know this, I've been preaching the retention issue was the salaries with the, with the nurses out there in particular. But I cannot, for the love of God, sit here and roll around in my mind as to what was so much more better back then than being on the FRS. So I would love to talk to Erin and find out exactly where that was at, because that sounds like, you know, I'm going to be quiet.
Yeah, I don't think that was anything that ever came to the board. That was just an internal discussion. Mr. Walker, one more thing before you leave. When you get the information that Commissioner Crumens asked about, please email it to all the commissioners.
Okay.
So we'll all have it.
Okay, I will do. And just thank you all once again, just for your conversations, because the hospital employees are your constituents. You know, they live in your area, you know, they, they live in your particular area, you represent them. So, you know, thank you for all you do. We greatly appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Thank you all. Mr. Crumens, about?
You're not wore out, Mr. Steve.
How you doing, guys? I like to sympathize with Mr. Walker and Mr. Randall, and I think what, I fought for this five, six, seven years ago, and it won't be a turnstile EMS. And the first thing we should do, take a baby step and just make EMS a county department, and then our first responders are going to be people who are going to stay here for years. Anyhow, let me get back to Freedom Festival. I sent Michael over a last-minute PowerPoint that I stayed up, because I thought I should say something to you guys today. It was an incredible event. You go to next screen. That's an aerial of the, of the event. It wasn't just me. You see this piece of paper? These are all the different people, agencies, contractors that were involved in this. And it was a, a big, hard-working team, and they, every time I called, they were there. Next screen, Michael. Phil Shelley helped me and him work together to put together the site plan to make sure traffic worked well. And we worked real hard with Brad Segree, with Sheriff's Department, to make sure his deputies were in constant communication with us. We had three thousand people over the course of the day. We had three hundred people booked on the helicopter rides. And we parked about a thousand cars on and off of the day on a first-year event. That's next screen, Michael. Most of the rest of this is pictures. That's a copy of a VIP program from the festival, but the networking was incredible. We had people there from Triumph, Opportunity, Florida. We had Mary Swoop there, and we had people from the Air Force that were key people to talk to Platform Aviation, the drone contractor who came down there. The next screen, Michael. And that's our opening ceremony with Commissioner Ricky. Next screen. And that's the commander of Tyndall. He came down with his son, Christian, and he's going to help us out a lot. Me and Commissioner Amerson had a meeting with him last week, and him and Eglin are going to have some conversations, and they're going to get back to us and talk a little more about maybe off-site funding to help us a little bit in the military operation area. Next screen. And that's the flyby opening ceremony. It's kind of missing up top, but next screen, Michael. And the Cadet Corps color guard, those kids were there till the end of the day, till six o'clock, picking up cones, picking up things. The kids were terrific. That's our two jets flying by. Apparently, somebody's altimeter malfunctioned. They were supposed to go at a thousand feet AGL, but they were down at about five hundred.
It was really loud, Josh.
It was really loud.
That's Mr. Ted, who's getting a hard-earned plaque that's going to be on the FBO hangar, on the FBO terminal building, which is real nice. He got a sample of it, because we couldn't get the bronze plaque back in time. I should have it today or tomorrow. Thank you, Ted. And all the commissioners Ted agreed on the copy that was on there and everything else. So long after you're gone, that's going to be the Ted Mosler FBO complex. Picture me. Somebody, nobody got a picture of me. I found one. And, next screen. Just a lot of action all over the place. Sheriff's Department was terrific. Just a real busy event. The helicopter rides were phenomenal. I wound up going on one. I mortified my wife, but I had a great time. Platform Aviation, I took them out to breakfast. I had a PowerPoint presentation that me and Commissioner Amerson had shared with Tyndall. I shared it with Platform. I discussed a lot of people in the community, and I said, "You know, this would be a great place for you, and you'd be the first one in." So I think they're going to be seriously coming back and talking to us, and potentially, it could be two hundred and fifty jobs for the county. Lots of family fun at the event. I didn't see a smile anywhere, and just, it was so nice that a corporate jet flew in. This is a common occurrence at the airport, four or five times a day. A lot of high-end business people or just people looking to get to Atlanta charter a jet. That flew in during the show. That's my wife. My wife, who was totally opposed to me ever doing an aviation event, showed up, and she put my pass behind her and had a good time. Car show was phenomenal. Jim Ward, Jessica Ward kind of pushed me to try to make this happen. We had ten cars booked the day before, and forty, fifty more cars showed up that day. It was phenomenal. And next year, we'll try to make it a lot better, and I think Jim and Jessica want to help. Just more car show stuff.
Yeah, there's Brad.
Our sheriff's department.
He means business.
Celebrity. All right, next screen. That's the Coast Guard 144 that flew by. Just incredible. That, you know, when you spend the time planning for a big event, it works, and we just spent a lot of time. Next screen, please.
Mr. Chairman, while we're doing that, I'll stop you there, Steve. No, we didn't have, we started this process in August. Isn't that correct? It was ninety days.
Ninety days.
This is a ninety-day prep event.
And you know what? I just wanted to see if I could do it. My wife was going to kill me, and I just breathed, ate, slept, drank that for ninety days. The auction, all the, excuse me, obsolete equipment and all the stuff that was fifteen years old, we put in that auction, and because of the attendance from the aviation event, it brought out a record crowd for him, and we got eighty-two thousand dollars for all the stuff that was decaying at the airport. With the auctioneer's fee off, it's seventy-eight thousand dollars. Now we could go and take that tractor and buy cash for, for the airport. And also, we'll have more money in the airport fund to replace other equipment. And I'm going to ask you in next meeting, we're going to need a zero-turn mower, a brand-new one, and we're going to need a blower for the back of the tractor to clean off the runways, but we'll be in good shape. That's the airport today. We made sure we don't want to have anybody bark about anything. It's spotless. Everything's gone. I was there Saturday, Sunday, and the volunteers were phenomenal. I showed up Sunday by myself with my pickup truck, and I didn't call anybody, and six more people were there helping me. So that's about it, I think. Thank you for the opportunity to do this. And what I'd like to do is make a date for next year to do the second one, November fifteenth of next year. And if we do it next year, same week, I researched the airshow calendar. All the airshows in North America stop the first week of November. There is not another airshow in North America the second week in November. week in November, so if we put it out there, we would get tremendous aerial support from the military. So I think it'll be a real good thing. So, no action items from me, other than, uh, can we, uh, make a motion to make this an annual event, and maybe try to do it again next year on November fifteenth?
No, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think it's, uh, the event speaks for itself, and that was probably, I might be wrong, that was probably the most people that's been on that tarmac since World War II.
I'll tell ya, there was so-
That, that's probably the most people that's been on that tarmac since the war.
And, and you know what, I can't tell you how many calls I'm getting from people who never knew we had an airport, who never stood foot on that airport, and there's gonna be a lot of community support for that facility now.
Yeah.
Um, we did a direct mailing to everybody in Appalachia Cola, to make sure the people who were mostly affected by that airport knew what was happening, and they were invited down, and, um, it was, wa, it was wonderful, I, I really enjoyed myself. Um, only other thing on my, uh, agenda, just they're gonna, we're gonna get rid of the rest of the auction equipment, we had an issue with the electric gate at the site, and it's over and over again, because it was battery-operated, I had the, I spoke to Aaron and Michael, I had it hardwired by the gate company, and we will never have a problem with the gate going down and batteries being changed. But, uh, I'll give you a good report next meeting, and I appreciate you having me here to, to give a little report.
I think it's tremendous to do it, uh, in conjunction with Veterans Day, I think it worked really well.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I like the, the way the county's going, so we now, for the last two or three years at least, we've had four days of fireworks in Franklin County, because everybody does them on different days, and now we're adding an event in conjunction with Veterans Day, and I just think it's tremendous.
And I could probably double or triple the attendance, and I didn't want it to happen this year, but parking, we could close one runway for the day, and that could be our parking, and we just have to figure out logistically how to move 'em, but roadways, uh, Brad came up with an idea to put a sign diverting people onto Appalachia, and diverting people onto the airport road, and when they got up Appalachia Second Block, Appalachia to the Airport was closed, diverted 'em in, and we had signage everywhere. So, um, great event, I was really happy to do it for you guys, and really cleansing thing for me, and I hope I could do it again for you.
There, there were still a lot of parking, though, left over by the, close to the hangar.
Yeah.
I think some people were parking before they ever knew, because they didn't know if there was available parking.
Yes.
They assumed, because they saw the other cars, they needed to park down the road, you know what I mean, so, yes.
You know, like you said, there was a bunch of empty spots still left over, because everybody, everybody took the other part already, but, uh, Steve, that was a good, uh, good, uh, good event. I was, uh, I was very impressed, like, uh, Mr. Chair said about, uh, uh, so many people on that tarmac, I was actually, I told several people, you know, back when I was little, we didn't ever go to the airport, you know, it was always restricted, and to see that many people out there was amazing, you know, because some people would never get to do that.
Yeah.
My, my kids enjoyed it, I got two kids that wanna be a pilot, you know, but, so they really enjoyed that, and thank you for your hard work. You did that in, what, ninety days, y'all did that in ninety days? Imagine, you know, the time you got now to start working on it.
Oh, a year? We're gonna, we're gonna kill 'em. I'm gonna ask you next meeting, there's a big convention in Las Vegas, and I used to belong to it, International Council of Airshows, and if you wanna do any, a real airshow, that's where I need to be second week of December, and I'll talk to you guys about that.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, Mr. before you leave, I, I just wanna say too, I was at a car show two weeks ago, it was Project Twenty-Five, to raise funds for toys for kids for Christmas, and I, you gave us some flyers, and so I was giving flyers to everybody, and, uh, over ninety percent of the individuals that are at this car show in Panama City said, "I didn't know Appalachia Cola had an airport." And everybody that came by to speak to me says, "This is great, I didn't know we had this gem, they didn't know we have this airport." So, you know, it's a good, and, and as Commissioner Crumins said, I remember going to, I wanna say an airshow there many, many years back when I was younger, and I remember going up in an airplane, but that was years ago, and I actually was gonna go do, I finally convinced myself I was gonna go up in the helicopter, but they were sold out. I think Commissioner, uh, Amerson and his wife got the last ride.
No, we weren't the last one.
He was up, I told him to sit on his helmet, like Apocalypse Now, remember?
But they, the helicopters sold out, there was three hundred helicopter rides.
Three, three hundred, they didn't wanna come here, and I told them, "We're gonna sell you out." Um, another thing I'd like y'all to know too, um, being at the airport daily, all that talk about regional air travel and a shuttle to Atlanta, it's happening every single day. There's corporate jets landing, picking up people, taking them to Atlanta so they could hop on a flight somewhere else, and that, that was one of them you saw that day. So, and what they told me, I interviewed one of them, and they went and told me, "We could do our own TSA, we could do our own baggage, we're certified by the government," and that's how they do it. But, we'll look intact further down the road, but I just feel, I'll let you guys know.
Uh, Mr. Steve, there is one thing that was brought to my attention that maybe people were misunderstanding. During the event, there was a separate, uh, thing posted for the auction than there was for the Freedom Festival, as far as the time it started. A lot of people thought that the auction wasn't starting until ten, because they were looking at the flyers, and they showed up to the auction, and half the stuff was already auctioned off.
Yeah.
And, because they started at nine.
Right.
So that's not necessarily a, a fault, but if we do 'em together, they need to have the same timeline, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I think so, so they don't leave.
Or, or just do the auction on a different, the day before, you know what I mean? But anyway, just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
And the big thing I wanna change for next year is the week before, all the volunteers in place have a dry run of operating the day of, because they parked them all nose-in on the airport road, and all the parking areas were blocked off, you couldn't even get into 'em. So, all right, anything else?
Just real quick, and I'm, I know we're pushing this, but, uh, just so y'all know, this, this whole thing started over, uh, Phil Shelley calling me up one day saying, "Come down to the pub," because he's British, "and let's have a drink." So I go down there, and, uh, he said, "I wanna run something by you." And he, he said, you know, the Pilot Association, was it EEA?
Yeah, EEA, yeah.
He said, "We wanna do a fly-in and provide, you know, plane rides for kids, just to bring some exposure to the airport." And, uh, I said, "All right, yeah," you know, it's kinda rolling around, I said, and then, you know, obviously as the conversation went on, I told him, I said, "You know what, I got the perfect guy for this." You know how I am, I'll put somebody to work well. I handed it off, I told, we, we had another meeting at, at the taproom, another pub, so, you know, it's kinda lining up there, but anyway, um, I told Phil, I said, "You, you know, this is the guy right here." I knew, I knew Steve's history, uh, in his prior life with airshows, stuff like that, and I told Steve, I said, "Keep it simple." I should've told the wall to keep it simple, but I knew that he could do it. But, uh, given the timeframe on that, and, and really, that was just ninety days, phenomenal job, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, that, you know, I had all the faith in the world, didn't surprise me one bit. Um, I will say, that was a first for me with the Huey rides. Uh, I've flown in a bunch, but that's the first time I ever landed in one.
Really? He had to jump out of 'em before.
Have you ever landed in one?
First time I ever landed in one.
Did you jump out?
But anyway, and I didn't even realize that, until my son pointed it out to me, he said, "Yeah, you know, I think that's the first time you've ever landed in one." I said, "It's a good point," but, but no, thank you for what you done.
Thank you, sir.
It was a great event, and getting, uh, the phone's been blowing up over, ever since the event, text messages, uh, the organization aspect of it, from the vendors, I've had multiple vendors reach out, talking about, "The military done a great job." I said, "I went in the military, that was your county airport that did that."
Yeah.
So, uh, very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, one thing, uh, that I was harping about for, you know, in the past, one thing it did, I saw the comments online, I just got a couple of emails, is, uh, the gap, that was the public recognizing the, the airport and what it could do and the jewels that it is, that has now, yeah.
Merged.
That, that vac, vacuum is gone. Steve, I'll tell you that your next best step, in my opinion, is now to get all these, the, the chambers, the civic clubs throughout the county, get them involved and let them know how important or how beneficial the airport could be to them.
Right.
Nothing, that, the irons are hot, as they say, now is the time to do that, because with that, once you have that buy-in from the public and from all these organizations, good is gold, good is gold.
And, and it could really, it, it can really go, and I, I'll, I'll make it slow, I'm not gonna, you know, but I, I really wanna help you make that happen, bring jobs to the county, and when I was looking at the ambulance before when he left, wouldn't it be nice to have people in the ambulance who stay, who make a career? It'd be nice to have jobs at the airport that people could make a career of.
Sure would.
Steve, one last thing, uh, if you would, I know I see one back there, George, he did a tremendous job as well, but thank your volunteers.
Yeah.
None of that can be possible without the help that you had as well.
I'll tell you what.
For me, and for us.
I, I, that's the next thing on my agenda, I'll tell you what, I, so much time catching up, I'm gonna do that today, but we did say thank you, but I wanna do it in a nice way. A question for you guys too, if I do something at the airport on Saturday, they're doing a EAA event, I thought maybe we could make it a breakfast for the volunteers to say thank you, is there any way the county would consider, um, expanding whatever it is?
Let's, you and I have a little conversation about that later.
Okay. All right, I'll speak to you later on.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, so we're kind of in a little pickle here, because we have a, a time certain item at ten-thirty, um, and I believe they're here, and, excuse me, sir, and so I don't think there's any event that we could put in, uh, prior to that, Attorney Schuler, it wasn't advertised, I just put it as ten-thirty in the agenda, it's not advertised public hearing or for public comment, can we start?
You can proceed now with, with, uh, Mr. David Deaton, it's not a public hearing, it's not advertised, it was just a date, a time certain for his convenience, because he needed to know a time certain to be available and be present.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and start.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back and start. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Up next, we're having a presentation from Mr. David Deaton from Tom De Haney Technical College.
I am not Mr. David Deaton. I'm George Wilkerson, the new Chair of the Economic Development Board. I think I know most of you guys, but my wife and I moved here from Arkansas, Chozes County. Got on the airport board because I see it as a really good resource to create some jobs. We have a nonprofit, Aaron Meals, that tries to do that. So it led me to go over to Haney and visit with David Deaton. Otis and Steve had already started that ball rolling. Long story short, if Franklin County can provide a facility for them to do an education program with, they're gonna move their satellite campus for their aviation mechanic training program out to the airport. And Dave was able to come join us today to kind of give you his overview on that program, answer any questions you might have, and that's what we're here for today, is to really make sure any of your questions are answered. I know you're aware that we want to start him out in the Randall Terry Hangar. That should work for three or four years at least, hopefully he'll outgrow that at some point. But right now, that's kind of the issue on the table. Any questions for me before I turn it over to Dave?
Any questions, Commissioners?
Good. I'll let you introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm David Deaton. I am the Aviation Director for Haney Technical College over in Bay County. We are part of the K-12 school system over there. We've had an aviation, well, I've been here since 2016 running that program. And we are expanding at almost exponential rate, or not just aviation, but all the programs we offer there. So we are looking at other ways to expand enrollment and help communities. And we were approached, I don't know, over a year ago now, as we started to talk about being able to open a satellite campus over here. And essentially, over the last year, we've looked at several options. And we think that if Franklin County or the Airport Authority in some way or version can provide a facility for us, we're willing to come and bring our staff and open up a satellite campus for aviation mechanics to start with. Aviation mechanics is growing at a rate that is almost unbelievable. If you look at Boeing and Airbus, the two major world manufacturers of aircraft, they've both put out many surveys and reviews saying that they're gonna be about a half a million mechanics short. Now, that includes attrition of new mechanics they know are coming onboard and those that are retiring over the next decade, over a half a million. And that number has not changed in the last two years. So it's expanding at a rate that is keeping up with that expansion. So we have been charged, schools, and I say we, as in all aviation schools in the country, have been charged with how can you produce more mechanics to meet this need nationally and globally, as well as regionally. And so we are working really hard on finding ways to do that, and we have incorporated several options to help with that. Part of that answer is expanding in other places, especially smaller rural communities, that they need the help as much as the world needs their mechanics and their workforce. So we wanted to be able to do that if possible. Essentially, this is a high-demand, high-wage job. Our graduating students right out of high school come to us for two years, get their certifications. They're going to work and they're making an average of $28 to $32 an hour right out the door. It's a, they, we have companies that come to us and recruit directly from our graduating classes. And that's just a little bit of an example of the need that's out there. Other than that, that's a quick overview, I understand, but I'm here for, to answer questions that you might have regarding this project.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I appreciate you guys coming out and giving this presentation. I think it's phenomenal for our airport and for the students and for potential job growth, so thank you.
Well, we have a kind of a threefold look at it. We garner to people coming right out of high school, and that's a great source. Actually, our percentage of students have increased in that mindset. But we also have mid-level or mid-career people decide they want a career change. So about 20% of our students are that. And then we have a high percentage of military veterans that come out of the military and do the same thing. So we actually cater to all three of those source groups.
Mr. Deaton?
Yes.
How soon do you plan to start this project?
We intend, we've been talking, our intention is to try to start the first class in August. Now, there's several things that have to happen between now and then. And as you all know, time gets to going fast when you're working with a lot of projects, which I am. But that is our intention. If there's a facility available, we intend to try to start in August, if we can meet the needs of the program.
Any questions?
No, I've asked you multiple questions.
Just want to make sure that my, I do have a question. So what we've understood as a board from the discussions we've had publicly is that you guys are interested in starting a satellite campus in Franklin County, and all you really need is a facility.
Yes, a facility and a place to do operations. We intend to bring the instructional staff and supplies that we need. And the 147 certificate, which is the FAA's authority to teach aircraft mechanics.
Right.
And that's a federal licensure program rather than a state. As a satellite campus, you won't have to deal with all of that federal regulation. We take care of that. And that's our proponent is to put that in place.
Okay. That was the one question I had. Is that it?
I have a question.
Yes, okay, clear.
I don't have any more. This relates to the board's task to me in terms of terminating the lease with Randall Terry early. So if you plan on commencing operations in August of this year, when do you need the Randall Terry Hangar in order to make sure that you can start in August? I need that kind of direction.
Right. Well, the idea is we need some transitional time. Now, if we walk into an empty facility, it may or may not need some renovations, some painting, rearrangement, nothing structural or, you know, no addition. I've looked at the facility and it will serve our purposes. But we'll need to be able to move things in and set up our curriculums and classrooms and things like that. The short answer is a couple of months is usually sufficient. But at the end of the year, say in May, is when I would normally say we need to start things. Is our, one of our busiest times. We're graduating a class and we have to deal with the graduation of those students, and we're helping them get employed and things like that. So I don't know how much could be done in May, but certainly June and July would be filled with as much time as we could to get ready. Short answer, two to three months. So May-ish, May or June.
Okay, so my target date should be early May?
If everything comes into place, then I would like to have somebody in there working in May, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Deaton?
I want to interject with one thing.
Yes.
When you guys sent me and Tom to Chicago, there's a mass exodus of MRO companies from South Florida that are looking for a place to go. Triumph already had told us at a past meeting with me, Michael, and Otis that they would be willing to build an MRO facility at the site. If this school is up and running, that's a skilled workforce that would roll into the MRO facility. So it would really help bind everything together.
Mr. Chairman?
MRO is mechanical and repair operations, correct? Just to make sure everybody understood what we're talking about here.
To the public what that is and maybe how that benefits. What are those, it would help if you guys would state what are those jobs? What are actually MRO jobs and how it helps the county in a nutshell?
He could tell you as well, but it's avionics, it's airframe, it's hydraulics, it's working on aircraft. And we had also bumped into somebody in Chicago that was an aircraft dismantler. And if we brought him into the site, it would be a great work platform for his kids to, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And so I'll add to that just a little bit, just for your record, it's maintenance, repair, and overhaul. And I don't know if that matters to you all, but some folks might think.
Well, I just wanted to make sure everybody else understood what we're talking about.
What we have found, and we've worked with, we've been doing this for quite a while now. And what we've found is when an MRO comes to your site, they don't just need aviation personnel, they need IT personnel, they need people that work in the nurse's office, they need office personnel. So they draw from almost every program we produce when they come in, how, come into town. So not that it just draws on the aviation personnel, which is, that's their main component. And that's why it is so critical to them to have that skilled workforce coming directly from the region, the area. But also they pull from other areas as well. So for us at Haney, what that tells us and has done for us in the past, that's why we're feeding them aircraft mechanics. We're also feeding them IT personnel, nursing personnel, administrative personnel. So they pull from all of our programs. And that should be true anywhere an MRO comes in-house, because they're gonna need all that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just got one thing. Like I said, me and Mr. Deaton and Mr. Wilkerson, me and Mr. Kirchman and Mr. Deaton, we've all had multiple conversations. Not to go in depth with any of that, because I think they're doing a great job. I just wanted to make sure that we understand that what we're, we need to focus on the idea, in my opinion, of getting them here. I know a lot, we talk a lot about Triumph and all that, it's a long game. The MRO facility is a long game. The short game is if we can get Haney here and get them a site for three, four years, that right there is pretty much a nail in the coffin, I would like to say, with Triumph. Because now we have a successful educational program. It just fills a lot of, a lot of the points that you gotta check off right there. And I know a lot of conversations that's being had behind the scene. It's kind of going down the weeds a little bit, going down those rabbit holes, so to speak, and getting confused with what our long-term goal is and short-term goal. Short-term goal is, as far as my opinion, is that we need to get entertained a discussion about getting them a site, getting them a spot, getting their toe in the door, so to speak. And then a lot of other doors will continue to open from that.
Yeah, that's consistent with the question I was asking.
Yeah, well, I just know that.
Building and we're trying to create you a space.
I know that Mr. Deaton and Mr. Wilkerson, Aaron and Ms. Busby, they've all had some conversations. And I listened, I'm sure y'all listened to some of those recordings. But they're going off in little areas here. But the main thing we need to focus on right now is providing them a space and let's get this proof of concept up and running. And then we can, you know, I think, I feel like it would open up more avenues down the road.
I agree. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Deaton? Sir, thank you for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Have a blessed day.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Boylan, and I think Mr. Kirkland, they're both appearing here by Zoom and they have a presentation. This is about the FDOT. So there is Mr. Boylan.
Go ahead, Mr. Boylan, if you can hear us.
Yes, I absolutely can. How are you all doing today?
Doing well.
Michael, do you want me to share my, the presentation, or you guys have it there?
No, you share it, sir, and it's set up, it is set up to accept your share request.
Okay. Okay, can you all see my screen?
No.
Watch it.
Okay, great. Well, I do appreciate you all taking the time to meet with us today. My name is Steve Boylan. I'm an engineer with the GAI Engineer, or JAI Consultants. We are working with the Florida Department of Transportation on a project for a trail along US 98 between Hinton Street and Crooked River Road. Ray Kirkland is here. He is the department's project manager, my counterpart on the owner's side. And so he will also be able to answer any questions that you may have on this project.
Mr. Boylan, I hate to interrupt, but we cannot see your share screen. I just wanted you to know that.
Oh, you cannot?
We cannot.
Well, you should, let me see.
If you're using two monitors, that messes with us all the time.
Oh, well, yeah, I am using multiple monitors.
Yes.
So, let me see. And I apologize, I'm not that familiar with Zoom. We use Teams here generally. Can you see any screen?
No, just you. Hold on, let me see.
Just me, well, that's unfortunate for you.
I'll see if I can put it up on my end.
Okay.
Hold on. If you want to, you could go ahead and I'll work in getting it up. You'll see it when it pops up on your screen.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize for that. Again, I'm not, not as familiar with Zoom as I probably should be. Anyway, this, this project is a, it's a SUN Trail project, part of the larger Capital City to See Trails Initiative by the department. SUN stands for shared use, non-motorized trail. It is essentially a multi-use trail with bicyclists and pedestrians. And again, part of a much larger system that will go out through the county and ultimately connect up with the city of Tallahassee. The plan here is to construct a 12-foot-wide trail typically, although in some areas where we're constrained, it may go down to a 10-foot-wide trail. We all know, of course, this area, just, just north of the sound is, there you go. Just north of the sound is certainly an environmentally sensitive area here along the coast. Particularly as you get to on the north side of US 98, which oriented to, this picture here is looking at US 98 eastbound, so towards the east. So to the right would be ultimately where the St. George Sound is, and to the, to the left is the northern side of the alignment. And you can see kind of in this picture, that's a little bit more of environmentally sensitive area. We have a very narrow right-of-way in this area. It's typically 66 foot throughout the length of the project, which gives us not a whole lot of room for a trail. As you can imagine, that's 33 feet each side of the center line. You've got 12 feet of lane. And as you can see in the picture, those utility poles there are right at the right-of-way line. So not a tremendous amount of room to work with. Currently, the concept that has been studied in the department's PD&E study has the alignment of the trail on the north side or the left side here of US 98. And our proposal that we'd like to discuss with you today is to get county input on potentially shifting that alignment towards the south side. And you can see, and we'll go through some details here, but you can kind of see why we're looking at that. As you can see in that picture, this is a very typical of the corridor. It drops off significantly on the north side of the alignment. So you can imagine, we put a trail in there, we're looking at having to put in some, perhaps some retaining walls and things like that. Whereas on the southern side of the alignment, it's relatively flat, and it's much more conducive to putting in the trail. If you go to the next slide, Mike? This is an aerial map of the, of the corridor. Again, starting from Hinton Street, going all the way towards the east at Crooked River Road. Right now, you see the two alignments there. The one on the top in the brown and the gray is the existing alignment for the PD&E. And what you see there in the, I guess, cyan there on the south side is our proposed realignment that we want to discuss with you today. Those brown lines there, that is potential boardwalk. And the reason we would need to put in a boardwalk there is because of environmental concerns in the area that we'd be looking to mitigate with a raised section instead of going in and filling in the wetlands there. And as you can also see, there is a planned crossing underneath the PD&E study there at Crooked River Road. At that point, the trail would be shifted onto the south side regardless. So the intention here is rather than crossing at Crooked River Road to facilitate that crossing up at Hinton Street. So we're not introducing another crossing into, across US 98. We're just shifting it further towards the west. So there's no additional hazard with the crossing. We're not bouncing back and forth anymore than the current point. Next slide. So looking at the northern alignment, as you can see, it places a trail relatively close to the roadway. We're typically within five feet of the lane of the road. So we have a number of challenges with that. First of all is the clear zone. As you can see in the, in the bottom typical there, where we put in the boardwalk, we're only offset about seven foot from, from the actual traffic, which is not as safe a condition as we'd like it to be. It does violate the department's clear zone criteria on this 55 mile an hour road. So it, essentially, it's a hazard to vehicles that could, if they run off the road, they'll be hitting a fixed object literally within seven feet of the edge of the pavement. In addition, you have in the middle typical section where we have a gravity wall or a retaining wall section, even that drop-off from the retaining wall lies within the department's clear zone. So that is also a safety hazard. In addition, we have those utility poles, as you can see here, right up against the right-of-way line. That creates some challenges for us. It takes away additional space that, that we do not, we would not have, and we may have to divert the trail around some of those utility poles. And of course, I mentioned we have some wetland impacts on that side, which would require those boardwalks and also require the department to purchase wetland mitigation credits and have a negative effect on the environment as a whole, as we seek to mitigate those wetlands. And of course, those steep side slopes are going to require those retaining walls, handrails, and deal with those drop-offs because, because we don't, we don't have the grade really working in, or the side slopes working in our favor on that side. working in, or the side slopes working in our favor on that side. Next slide. If we were to move to a southern alignment, it's a lot more favorable, at least from a geometric standpoint, we still have the, the road close to the trail, however, we're able to get rid of the boardwalks and, and most of those retaining walls, and we don't need to reestablish a drainage ditch, as you can see here on the, well, at least widespread, as you can, as you can see in that, that picture that I, we showed earlier, all of the water flows off towards, towards the south, there is no significant ditch system on that side, so we can simply install the trail and let the water flow over top of the trail and go where it does go today. This is a huge safety improvement by eliminating that boardwalk and eliminating those walls. We do not have vehicular safety issues with those being fixed objects and drop-offs within, within the department's clear zone. We have fewer utility impacts, we have reduced wetland impacts, and, and again, we're able to, to get rid of most of the needs for the ditches. Next slide. I mentioned the roadway crossing, as you can see here, there's a little bit better zoomed in area. Right now, the, the department's study proposes to cross right at, at Crooked River Road, as you can see there on the, on the right panel, and what we are proposing to do is to, instead of crossing at Crooked River Road, cross at, at Hinton Street, to shift that alignment onto the, onto the south side, again, not introducing an additional crossing, just, just shifting it further towards the west. Next slide. And that's pretty much our presentation, obviously, we're, we're here to answer any questions you, you may have, and, you know, really, the goal here is to get input from, from the county, see if you know of any concerns or have any concerns with this, so we can make a decision on, on what our next steps will be in, in designing and ultimately constructing this trail. I don't know, Ray, if you have anything you wanted to add?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton, thanks for your presentation. On this Crooked River Cross, so you're saying that with a northern alignment, it's going to cross that Crooked River, but if, if you do the southern alignment, it's going to cross that Hinton Street, is that, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So, if, and I'm trying to remember, I think the speed limit on Crooked River Road's, what, 55 miles an hour?
It's 55.
55, and then on Hinton Street, I know that area's 45 mile per hour.
It's 55.
Is it 55 through Hinton Street? Ooh, okay.
It changes right there before you get to Hinton Street.
Okay. My question is, I guess, I don't know if you can answer this, are they going to decrease that speed limit for the safe crossing of individuals for this trail?
Uh, Ray can probably answer that better than I can, but I do not believe the intent is to lower the speed limit. We would have, we would have signing and, and special emphasis, you know, crosswalks in the area, but on the adjacent trails, we haven't reduced the speed limit, have we, Ray?
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, and the crosswalks, are they going to be, what kind of crosswalks are they going to be, do, do you know, can you answer that?
Yeah, they'll be like you see at a lot of signalized intersection, those big wide stripes that kind of run longitudinally with the road, kind of looks like a ladder. So, they'll be, and, and that's referred to as special emphasis crosswalk, so they will be very visible to motorists, and we will have trail crossing signage there as well in advance of that crossing to, to warn motorists that, hey, there, there are potential crossings here. One of the things that's always important to us on these are, are sight distance, you know, will the people doing the crossing be able to see vehicles coming from either direction? Will the vehicles coming from either direction be able to see people crossing the trail? And in both these locations, we have very good sight distance, so that, that itself won't be an issue. We obviously wouldn't want to put the crossing around a curve or over the top of the hill where, where people didn't have an opportunity to, to be seen.
And Mr., one more question, sorry, Mr. Chairman, there's going to be, I'm assuming, lights at these crosswalks, like streetlights, you're going to install streetlights to help with the, at night, people wanting to cross?
Uh, that's an excellent question, I do not believe there are plans for, for streetlights at the moment on, for these crossings. Again, Ray, I'd, I'd kick that over to you, I, I don't think that's normal department policy.
Yeah, I will, I will check into that and see where you-
Because that, that area is really dark at night.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Um, Mr. Boylan?
Yes.
Anthony Kroom here. Who will be responsible maintaining and the maintenance of these, uh, this project and the boardwalks and all of that?
Uh, again, I'll defer to Ray on this, but my understanding is that these Sun Trails are maintained by the Department of Transportation.
That is something that we look at, there is some maintenance agreements that we can look at doing, that we'll talk about later on during the process, about who will be maintaining the project.
Got you, okay, because, you know, it's, it's something that needs to be done, you know, if we are looking at this, you know, and we make sure they do maintain, especially when we got boardwalks getting built as well, if that's, if that's what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear, my apologies.
You're good, all he, all he did was express, he didn't know, because we don't know for sure if you guys will be doing the south side or north side at this present time, especially with there being boardwalks and stuff, he was just concerned about, you know, who's going to have to, how, how's the maintenance going to look on that? That was the question.
Understood. One of the additional things, I mean, I know, I know we all are all too familiar with hurricanes and things like that in this area of Florida, particularly this year, you know, one of the advantages of not having boardwalk is also the fact that, you know, it can't be damaged, you know, the trail, the trail will be an accurate trail, very similar to the road, and its chances of being damaged are much, much less.
Thank you.
Now, can I have the floor down?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Ms. Boylan?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Cheryl Sanders, I'm the commissioner of that district out there, I've got a lot of grave concerns about this, because, I'm going to tell you, at the Crooked River Road, there is a golf course that goes into there. We have excessive traffic in that area to start with. We have in the pack, the, the residents out there has, has asked for turning lanes, and now you're saying you may have to put a, a, a crosswalk across there. There's been several areas in that stretch of 98 where this board has asked for crosswalks to be, be put up for pedestrian use because we are having people ran over out there and killed, and I want to know what y'all going to do to rectify this problem before y'all going to put a sidewalk in. North side, south side, the north side has these wetlands, but the south side is along the coast there, and when we have storm surge, it goes all the way across 98. So, you know, y'all need to put some more thought in that, is my way of thinking. Um, I'm, I'm just one commissioner, but that's what I think. Uh, this is a very dark area, it needs to be, uh, lights on it, you can put lights on it, and two, where you see those wetlands areas, you have multiple, not just one or two, but multiple natural drains that FDOT takes care of in that area.
Right, yeah.
So, this, this is not going to be as easy a project as it looks like on paper, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I understand that completely, those are definitely things that we will be looking at from a drainage standpoint, to make sure that, that it drains as it does today, or better. But yeah, no, we're, we're aware of, of those cross drains that are out there today that we'll, we'll need to work with.
You know, it's one thing to, to run a sidewalk or back path or whatever, and I'm not opposed to this, I'm just, I'm, I'm the devil's advocate today, but it's one thing to run a sidewalk or, or back path along adjacent forest land or timberland or something like that, but then when you, when you run it around people's property, they may not want it. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So, what has been the public input so far on this project?
The, uh, there have been public, public meetings on the project, now, the, the southern alignment has not been brought to the public as of yet, this is our first step in talking with, talking with the commission to, to get your input and thoughts on, on how the community might feel on it, but, but yeah, the, the project has gone through a full PD&E study, which has looked at the environmental impacts, looked at socioeconomic concerns, archaeological concerns, all of that, and been to public meeting, so the public has had a chance to weigh in on the trail as a whole. All 20, I think 22 miles of it were underneath that study, this is just one small section of that, but, but we have not approached these property owners specifically about this potential alignment.
And I have to say, have you looked at the whole area, because not only this area's going to present you that problem, there's other areas along this trail, if you're planning on moving it in toward Caravelle, that's going to be worse than what this is right here. And, and I'm going to tell you something, thing about it is, I don't mean no harm by you, by saying this, but I believe y'all got the cart ahead of the horse, because what you've needed to do is come and talk to this government first, and then we could have kind of, kind of showed you the ropes and what was going on, because I'm going to tell you something, I've already got numerous calls and emails concerned about this project. They're not against the back path or anything like that, but they want more thought being put into it than just slap down the asphalt or slap down the concrete and have it done. So, and, and I don't mean to offend nobody, but that's my job, and I'm going to tell you something, I do not like either one of these things. I, I, that is a bad area, just like in the Landmark area about two, three, well, about three, four months ago, we had two people killed trying to cross the road out there because they ain't got light, because they, they haven't got a crosswalk. When we ask for crosswalk, we don't get it, Mr. Boylan, so, you know, well, I'm, I'm not trying to be negative towards you, but there needs to be more thought in this, this is just slapping asphalt on the side of the road and somebody riding a bicycle or walking on it, a lot different than that, okay?
No, I understand, what, I mean, what I can share with you is that it, it has been studied, that study was not done by us, it was commissioned by the department and another consultant performed that, so I can't speak exactly to all the coordination that's, that's occurred with, with the county or on the development of that study. Certainly, I hear and understand your, your concerns in the area, particularly with crossing and lighting, and, you know, certainly, people are getting hurt out there, that is the last thing in the world we want to see happen. This project is intended as a safety benefit at its core. Right now, there are absolutely nowhere safe for pedestrians or bicyclists to be, there's not even paved shoulders on this section of US 98, and this would provide a refuge for those individuals and a, and a place for them to be, so to speak, so, you know, certainly, I, I believe the department's intent is to make this not only an amenity, but also improve safety for those users along the, along the quarter, but it is a high-speed roadway, it is in a rural environment, and, and yes, it is, you know, safety for crossings is always going to be a challenge in, in an environment like this.
So, Mr. Boylan, I want to ask some question. With what we have presented here today, if it, if it stays with northern alignment, there's going to be a cross on at Crooked River Road.
That's correct.
But if it goes to the southern alignment, it's going to be at Hinton Street.
That's correct.
And that, that's really what you're asking us to weigh in on, on which, which area we would prefer to have that crosswalk be. Uh, the other thing I can say, and I, I was thinking, as Commissioner Sanders was speaking, I can remember when I first got elected, I really wanted to put some crosswalks on St. George Island in some different spots for similar reasons, maybe not death, but there, there were issues. So, we went out and we had, we looked at them, and we did our, our thing, and had, uh, people go out with us from Dewberry, and they said, well, Commissioner, here's the problem, you don't have a sidewalk on the other side of the street, you can't put a crosswalk and direct somebody to walk in the middle of the road. Unless you have sidewalks on both sides, it's hard to have a crosswalk. They're not going to allow you to put a crosswalk and just direct people to walk wherever they want to walk after they get across the road. So, that's another issue that's going on, that maybe has hindered us in getting crosswalks where we want them, because we've also talked about with the department about trying to get one in East Point where the, uh, post office is. We've had numerous people hit there by cars, it's just one of those high-traffic areas that people think is a little east point, and they go in like they're, they're still, you know, down in Ocala on I-75, but they're not, you know, so, I, I, I get all that discussion, but I think, I just want to clarify, what you're looking for from us today is whether we prefer the crosswalk to be at Crooked River or down at Hinton Street, is that correct?
Uh, that's certainly, yeah, a big part of this, and also, any concerns or, or thoughts or input you may have about it being on the, just generally in this section on the south side versus the north side. Again, this is only a mile and a quarter long trail, it's not, it's not a significantly long portion of the trail, there are no destinations to speak of on the north side of the road, so there's not a lot of reasons that people would be crossing in this area. That said, people do things all the time that don't necessarily, uh, kind of defy logic at times, but, but certainly, there's, you know, in this, in this area, we wouldn't expect there to be a lot of crossings, other than a designated crossing point there at, at Hinton Street.
Right, because at the end of the day, this Sun Trail network that you guys are a part of in this area, what's the ultimate plan for that, where's it supposed to end at, do you know? Not just in Franklin County, but the project itself, the Sun Trail.
There is a, a map out there of the entire network, it does actually go all the way up to Tallahassee, and, and the department is working, like I said, about a 22-mile section along US 98, it's certainly information we could provide to you, I don't have it handy, and even if I had it handy, I'm not able to share my screen, so.
Oh, that's fine, I, I think it actually would wind up going to Pensacola along 98, is the reason I ask, because that's something I was actually shown by Chris Rito, which is the executive director for the Regional Planning Council, that I'm chair on, on behalf of this board in this region, it sits on the Sun Trail Advisory Board, so that, you know, this, this whole thing, it's not just going to here, that, in other words, they have plans to keep going, just like they did in Waculla, they're going to go all the way to the county line and try to go to the next county line. So, this is a project they're trying to do across the state as a Sun Trail, I just want to make sure the public was aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yeah.
History of that, what, what brought this about?
Yeah, no, it's all across the state, and it's also to provide access so people aren't on the roadways, you know, you know, so there's a place for pedestrians to be, there's a place for joggers to be, walkers, bicycles, that kind of, you know what I mean? So, it, it's, it's actually trying to make it safer. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of money, a lot of effort, but it is a, a very expensive network.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
He wants an answer today on this, but I'm, he, he just said just a while ago, that they have not, the public has not saw this.
No, he wants us to weigh in on it first.
Yeah.
He's, oh, that's before the public, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, coming to the government.
Yeah, that's what he's doing.
But I, I, but we always do something with the public's knowledge.
But they're, they're the ones going to have the public, you know, we're not going to hold the public.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't like either of them, so.
I would prefer Hinton Street myself, because like you said, it's very congested Crooked River Road.
Oh, yeah. Right near Crooked River Road.
Just the, the only issue with that is, is in this particular area, shifting it to the south side or the, or the base side of the highway there is going to affect multiple residents, where keeping it on the north side, there, there isn't any issues with that, that's where the public outcry is going to come from, I think, that Commissioner Sanders is alluding to. My question is, is if you guys do decide to put it on that south side, as far as ingress to these properties, I'm assuming that's going to, you know, that's going to follow in the, in, you know, into y'all's lap to have adequate, uh, or, or quality ingress into there. I'm trying to think, I've, I've looked at this project up through Waculla multiple times, you know, are y'all going to have, or pave that access up to, you know, to the point of where y'all's sidewalk is, or where the, the Sun Trail is going to be, and then it's up to the property owner from that point on into the property to maintain?
Yeah, that's- Yeah, that's, that's correct. Uh, what we normally do on this is we will, particularly since it's a relatively narrow right-of-way, if the driveways are not improved or we need to adjust them as a result of putting in the trail, the department would basically repave in kind to, uh, to the right-of-way line, uh, to, to maintain the access they have today. Um, this is a little bit more of a unique area with these houses are set back pretty far from the road. I know in a lot of these locations, we put in these trails, you know, people are set back twenty-five feet from the road, so the trail really ends up, you know, right in front of their home. These, these houses are set back a couple hundred feet from the road. So it's, uh, it's, it's not as intrusive.
Well, not, not to be negative, but as this progresses, you just starting to get into some, uh, challenges. I mean, in between Carabelle and, and East Point or right there, I mean, the state don't even repave that after a hurricane, and you guys are going to put a Sun Walk down through there. Uh, after a storm, which one y'all going to repair first, the sidewalk or the road? But, uh, but anyway, that's just my thoughts. I mean, I, there's, there's going to be multiple challenges moving forward with this in this particular county because of just the fact geographically where that road is compared to the water. I don't think you have that challenge in any of the other counties that I'm aware of outside of maybe Mexico Beach, but, but anyway, I'm, uh, that's all the questions I have.
I'm, I'm like you, Art, you're going to have multiple challenges there, because the only place you're going to be able to put it down the north side of the road. Cause they're like off of Yantbo and all that, you know, around, coming around that big old curve. You ain't got enough room over there for a sidewalk on the water, on the side. So you're going to have multiple challenges.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Mr. Bowlen, um, what's the timeline on this? I mean, do you, you have to get an answer on this today, but, you know, we do have a FDOT project coming up where they're going to supposedly repay you. I know they're doing it in sections. Is this going to coincide with that? Or are you guys going to do this before? I know this is just a preliminary phase, but can you give me a timeline or us a timeline?
Yeah, right now, we're kicking off the design of it. I don't believe that construction at this point is funded for this trail. Um, so I, I believe that's correct, right, Ray?
Yes, that is correct. Construction's unfunded at the south.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. When do y'all intend to have a public, uh, have a meeting and allow the public to have input on this particular shift in the, uh, north-south of the trail? Or do y'all intend to have a?
Yeah, we'll be holding a public meeting, um, probably next summer, I believe it's on the schedule for. Um, that said, doesn't mean we wouldn't reach out to the individuals who are fronting, fronting the trail alignment, uh, before that, that time, obviously, as they would be the most affected.
You said next summer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, because with the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bowlen, with the project not being funded yet, actually, you're still just starting the design. It's four or five years away.
It could well be, yes, sir.
Make sure we all know what we're talking about here.
Well.
It's not going to happen next week.
If it's going to be that many years, y'all, this park's in 98, now you're going to be here. It's going to be.
They're fixing to repay it. They're fixing to repay it, Commissioner, don't, don't put that out there. We want DOT to repay it just like they said they're going to.
Yeah.
That's what we want.
That's a good idea, Mr. Chairman. That's a good idea. No, thi- this is it. You don't have the money. Y'all are just doing a, a conceptual plan. It's, um, whatever we say, whichever, it's going to go whatever way DOT wants to go. So, I mean, you know.
So were you, were you, this was just a presentation and, and discussion today, Mr. Bowlen?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to come, come out of this, obviously, with, with input from the, from the commission, which I really appreciated everything you brought to us today. Um, and then, you know, absent any objections to, um, to, to looking at this additional alignment, you know, begin design surveys and everything, looking at, okay, if we do ship this to the south, what is that, uh, what is that look like?
Only objection looking at that, because I can tell you right now, you're going to build some boardwalks and stuff when you start going between Carabelle and East Point. You're not going to have a choice. There's going to be some bridges built. I'd just go in and put it flat to you, you know what I mean? Which I've noticed there are some that are that way in Waukulla County, a, a section that's just been done. There's some areas that have.
That they're pitted.
Looks like a bridge or whatever, and I, I haven't noticed any residents that's had their sidewalk tore up or nothing's done in an ill manner. It all looks very smooth. It all looks very good. I can't wait till we can have something like that we can enjoy for the residents of Franklin County.
I, I got one more, one more question. On, on this particular stretch of road here, i- is that private property on both sides of the highway, just from my knowledge? Or is that state property on the north side?
The state's got sixty-six foot period.
Of this?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the actual property.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not the forest or any of that.
No, no, no.
Yeah, it's not private property.
Private property.
Yeah, but everywhere they're talking about doing this is in their.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's their right-of-way.
Yeah.
Correct, it'll be in the department's right-of-way.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just, uh, you know, I, I thought it was private property, um.
St. James Bay, Art, St. James Bay owns all that land north, from Crooked River Road to the Catholic Church up there.
Okay.
And then, you know.
I thought it was, it just hadn't been developed or cleared, so sometimes it gets kind of sketchy on what, in my mind, on what the state owns. They own so much. I mean, I just, um.
Yeah.
The, the only other thing I'll say, Mr. Bowlen, I think we about talked this around full circle, I, I think what some of the commissioners and I don't pretend to represent to know what they're asking, but I know in Waukulla County, somewhere, places y'all have sidewalks that go across 98, there's not just a sidewalk power, crosswalk painted, there is a, an area that residents can hit the button and has a flashing white light and all this kind of stuff to make sure traffic can see it. So I, I don't know, I'm pretty sure DOT is not going to put a full-fledged traffic light there, but some kind of light so that, so for pedestrian walkways would be consistent with what I've seen, at least on the trail that's been implemented in, in Waukulla County with the flashing white light.
Like, like if you got, if you're coming into Carabelle, let's say you're coming from the dollar store, going toward sixty-seven, and somebody wants to cross right there at sixty-seven and ninety-eight and go on over there to the stores across the road toward Marine Street, they've got, um, I'm thinking about it, they got the signs out there, but then when that person get to that particular spot, then the lights start flashing.
Yeah.
I mean, you see them for miles, the lights start flashing.
Yeah, tho- those are called, just to, to see you guys, uh, give you the benefit of, um, of the terminology, just for, for fun. It's, uh, called a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, or an RRFP.
We'll never remember that, but thank you for sharing that. No, you're good.
So, you know, I know, I know we were talking about acronyms earlier today, so I figured you'd enjoy that one. It, it is absolutely something we can look at, um, as, and we will be looking at as part of the, the design of this, is what, what treatments we can do for those crossings. Um, that decision has not been made as of yet, but certainly, uh, we will take the, the commission's recommendations or thoughts on that back, uh, into, into consideration for the design.
Sounds good. Anyone else have any questions or concerns? Mr. Bowlen, thank you for your presentation today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you again for your attention and your time, and I hope you all have a, a wonderful rest of your day.
Yep. Attorney Schuler, I know we've skipped past eleven o'clock, so we need to go now to the public hearing.
Uh, that's, that's correct. It's, well, it's just a publicly noticed, uh, hearing for the code enforcement policy and procedures. I provided a copy of that to the board last month. Uh, the board wanted to, uh, set this hearing so that the public would have an opportunity to weigh in and also give the board time to read, review, and reflect on the draft that was provided in October. Um, and thi- this policy and procedure came about because the board, uh, wanted the staff to have steps to follow for code enforcement. So that, that is what this document does with these policies and procedures, and it's broken down into the following components. There's, uh, an enforcement procedure, which essentially has six steps. There is a hearing procedure that also has, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different steps for the, uh, staff to follow. There is an administrative section dealing with fines and liens, um, and there is a, an appeals process, and then there's directions to the staff on how to provide notices to the, the individual property owners regarding code enforcement. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that the board may have, and if y'all don't have any specific questions, uh, take public comment.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Attorney Schuler? I guess there are no questions.
I love it.
Yeah, that doesn't mean we won't have something for it, so we have to talk about.
Obviously.
You know, we're so well-known.
There you go. Well, that's just consistent with all of us. So, uh, no questions for Attorney Schuler from the commission? All right, so now I need to open up for public comment, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is anyone in the room that wish to comment on this publicly? Anyone at all? You do not have to have a speaker card filled out. Mr. Marone, is anybody online?
Anyone online would like to comment on this item before the board? Code enforcement policy, please indicate by raising your hand on your device. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And if there are no questions from the board, then I would, uh, request that the board, uh, adopt the policy and procedures as presented, because I've not heard any commentary from the board with any, any, um, amendments that you are proposing. So if you would adopt this by motion and vote of the board, then that allows staff to move forward with enforcement action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve with question.
Okay, so a motion to approve, uh, from Commissioner Ward. Have a second from Commissioner Crew. Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
Uh, I do want to make a note for there, and I'm pretty sure, uh, county staff's already looked over this. I know you've worked with county staff.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think Courtney was at a meeting a couple, I don't know, a couple meetings back, and we made sure that this was going to give them what they needed to move forward and proceed with any code enforcement complaint that comes, um, to the county. So I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page, and we are, so.
Uh, yes, ma'am, I have met with, uh, Ms. Courtney and also Mr. Marone, um, that they had a, a couple of tweaks that they wanted me to make, which have been incorporated, uh, that the amended document was provided to the two of them, uh, as well as the county commission last month.
Thank you.
Uh, Attorney Schuler, before we vote, I do have, under discussion, I do have something I want to ask.
Yes, sir.
Under notices, uh, it seems the language here is, it mentions something about running it in a, uh, in a, you know, uh, under, I'm sorry, C1, so it shall be, uh, four publications for consecutive weeks, and a newspaper of general circulation in the county. Uh, do we also have the ability to post it on our county website?
There's nothing that prevents us from doing it.
Okay. I, I just, I'm good with all that. I just know that's costing the county money to try to do enforcement, because they're not going to do it for free in the paper.
Correct.
That's the only reason I ask.
Okay, well, keep in mind, section C, that, that is, it says, "In addition to the notice provided in subsection A," so that would be additional notices, uh, at the option of special magistrate. So if, if they require it, then, then it will need to be done.
I'm good with that. That's why I wanted to ask.
Yes, sir.
I knew there would be something better than what I was thinking. All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Does that conclude the public hearing, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, then we'll go back to our regular agenda. Ms. Lisa Sherry from Disc Village, please come forward.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with y'all this morning. Um, I was, uh, bringing information to you guys in regards to the opioid epidemic and the fentanyl crisis, and how Disc Village, as the local nonprofit organization that provides substance use disorder treatment services to this community, how we are trying to tackle that problem and address it with, um, harm reduction strategies. Michael, were you going to pull that up?
I had to queue it up there. Why don't we?
[laughing] And I can tell you a little bit about myself while Michael's pulling that up. So I am Lisa Sherry. I'm the community outreach coordinator for Disc Village. I serve eight counties in the Big Bend region. Um, I have been in the criminal justice and behavioral health field for over thirty-five years and have been at Disc Village for over twenty-two years, providing services to this community and all the other communities in the Big Bend region. Um, one of the things that we're looking at, Michael, if you can go on to the next slide, is part of the harm reduction strategies we look at is public safety, because that's one of the big things that we're looking at for this epidemic and the fentanyl crisis, is how to keep the public safer. So utilizing evidence-based approaches, um, harm reduction strategies have been studied. Uh, they have been looked at by numerous organizations and federal organizations, and they show us that, um, these strategies do work. They reduce the number of deaths associated with opioid poisoning events, and opioid poisoning events are also known as overdoses. It reduces the impacts on communities with emergency response calls due to this problem. And by implementing these strategies, there is an increase in awareness of these issues which makes individuals safer because they're knowledgeable about the problem and how to address it. Next slide, Michael. So one of the things that we look at in regards to, um, the issues that are there, we look at, you know, national trends, but then a lot of times we want to look at local, because, um, for majority of individuals in the communities that I serve, they want to know what's happening in our communities. So when we look at why this epidemic and the fentanyl crisis is so dangerous and so problematic, you have eight-point-seven million children nationwide having a caregiver who suffers from a substance use disorder. Suicide is the third leading cause of death in youth ages ten to twenty-four. Twenty percent of those deaths, opioids, um, were present in that incident. Forty-seven percent of child poisoning deaths involved opioids as poisoning agency of children aged five years and younger. And then the data that I was able to pull for year-wide data was 2023. Year-end data from the Florida Department of Health overdose dashboard noted a hundred and twenty-nine overdoses in Franklin County with four fatalities. In that data, it's kind of, uh, sometimes a little sketchy, but the data that I pulled, um, eighty-four-point-five percent of those individuals who, um, were in that one-twenty-nine are Caucasian. Uh, median age is fifty-to-fifty-nine-year-olds, and the majority are female. The 2024 data that I pulled was January to October of this year, noted seventy-nine overdoses with four fatalities, median age fifty-to-fifty-nine, majority female. So for the community here, that's kind of the problems that are presenting when it comes to the opioid epidemic and the fentanyl crisis. So when we are looking at what is fentanyl and why is it so problematic, the, the penny graph is, is used a lot. So there's the penny, and you see the tiny little specks of white powder next to it, that's the amount of fentanyl that kill, that can kill an adult, a full-sized adult. So it's kind of like grains of salt. That's how, um, deadly this particular substance is. So fentanyl's synthetic opioid, it's made in the lab, it's a hundred times more potent than morphine. The smallest amount can kill depending on the person's tolerance and body size. Pharmaceutically available in oral lozenges, tablets, sprays, patches, and injections. So fentanyl can be liquid, powder, or tablet. It can be injected, snorted, sift, smoked orally, or spiked onto blotter paper. So it is prevalent, it's cheap to make, it's, um, easy to move around, and it's easy to, um, get into the public. So fentanyl is used in surgeries for cancer patients. It was never intended to be a general public substance being out there. Um, but the reason it is out there is because it's cheap and easy to make. So kind of like they are looking at why would somebody utilize opioids or fentanyl? And that's because it, uh, the opioids do their job, and the job is to block pain. So it does that. But when it causes that relaxation, euphoria, pain relief, it also causes sedation, confusion, drowsiness, um, respiratory depression. So what opioids do, it's kind of like people will say, well, you know, you, you have CPR, you can revive somebody by, you know, um, you know, pushing on the heart. The issue for opioids is when it settles into the receptor in the brain, it's not telling The issue for opioids is when it settles into the receptor in the brain, it's not telling the heart to stop. It's telling the lungs to stop working. So that's why you'll see things like gurgly breathing, bluish skin, respiratory failure, changes in pupil size, not being able to revive somebody when you shake them. And that's because what's happening is, is everything in their body is being suppressed. And then when the lungs stop working, the person stops breathing, and that's when you go into an opioid poisoning event or an overdose. So what we try to say to individuals is that we know that this problem is out there. Almost, you know, a million people have been affected by this across the nation. We still have currently about 100-plus people a day dying because of this epidemic. And what we've tried to do is look at ways to combat it. And harm reduction, Michael, if you go ahead and change the slide. So harm reduction is things like sunscreen, seatbelts, speed limits, bicycle helmets. These are all things that are harm reduction strategies. People engage in risky behaviors. What can we do to help keep them safer? So what we've looked at in the field is taking harm reduction strategies and applying it to substance use disorder, and what we found, it does save lives. So what we're trying to implement is things such as, Michael, you can switch the thing. One of the biggest things that we utilize to combat the opioid epidemic and the fentanyl crisis is the medication naloxone. It's on the market under Narcan. That's what most people utilize it or know it as. There's another medication called Cloxato. That's double-strength Narcan. So naloxone, what that does when it enters the brain, it's a nasal spray. This is FDA-approved. You can buy it at CVS, Walgreens, any drugstore. It's about $45 a box, and Disc Village provides it for free. So we get it out into the communities that we serve for free, because we know that this medicine is the only thing that will reverse an overdose or an opioid poisoning event. So when the nasal spray, the medicine in the nasal spray gets into the bloodstream and gets into the brain, what it's doing is that the receptor is being blocked there. So the drug is sitting on that receptor, telling the lungs not to work. When the medication, naloxone, hits that brain, it's throwing that drug, the fentanyl or the opioid, off of the receptor and allows that person to breathe. And what you're doing when you do this is you actually are putting a person into a withdrawal phase, because you are throwing that drug, opioid, off of that receptor and allowing that person to breathe, but they're also going to have some other kinds of physical conditions for that. And I want to be honest about how that would be and how that would affect somebody. Muscle aches, anxiety, runny nose, excessively sweating, inability to sleep, because you're kind of pushing that medication into them. And then the severe ones would be abdominal cramping, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, goosebumps on the skin, rapid heart rate. So what they're trying to do when you're in, implementing the naloxone, is to get the person breathing again while EMS services are being called to respond. So that is really kind of what we're looking at in regards to saving somebody, so that we can get them help and get them into treatment. One of the things that we look at, Michael, if you want to switch over, when it comes to this particular epidemic and crisis, is it is a public health issue, because it's affecting people, and the people are part of our communities. There are our community members. There are, you know, the family members, the people that we know and we care about. So when we look at introducing naloxone or Narcan into a community for a harm reduction strategy, we're looking at addressing substance use disorder problems, because it will improve public safety. It also improves public health outcomes. If an individual is receiving substance use disorder treatment, they are more likely to have better health. They're more likely to utilize treatment services, and they're less likely to utilize things that will happen, like criminal justice systems, people going into the local jails, people having to, you know, be served in those capacities because of the criminal kinds of elements that go into people's behavior when they engage in substance use disorder. So that's one of the things that we try to incorporate, which is a good outcome for public health, and also providing access to treatment. So the more individuals that have access to harm reduction strategies are more likely to enter treatment, they're less likely to continue using substances, and they have more successful recovery efforts. So that's kind of how we look at it when we're looking at this problem of the opioid epidemic, which is if people are dead, we cannot treat them. So we need to keep them alive, so that we can get them into the resources and the treatment services that we have available. I did bring for you guys program information. These are programs that Disc Village runs. They run in this community. They run in the area. We have, one of the things that is a big game changer for us is medication-assisted treatment, and that is medicine that is prescribed by a doctor and administered by a nurse. And this medication will help people with the withdrawal, because a lot of times the reason why people do not want to stop taking opioids is because of the withdrawals and makes, how it makes them feel, very sick. It is, reduces cravings, and it's a receptor blocker. So even if a person who's on this medication uses a substance like opioids, they are not going to get the physical effect of those that they had before. And so it allows people to be engaged in their communities, to work, to get their kids back. It allows them to be able to regain their life, because what happens with opioid addiction is that it takes the person's life. It takes everything about them away, from their loved ones, from their family members, from their communities. And what we're trying to do is give that life back to them with treatment. So a lot of it does start with harm reduction strategies, and naloxone is a huge part of the success for us to be able to get people off of opioids. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Sherry. Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here today.
Yes, ma'am.
So just for our public and community to be aware of, you guys are located here in Franklin County on, and you just sent us this flyer. It has 150 10th Street, so kind of, they're close to Weems Hospital.
Yes.
Do families that have, family members that may need help, do they have to call for an appointment, or can they just stop by, or?
Well, in your community, stopping by is just fine.
Okay.
You know, if it's a busier place, they may not be able to see them right away, like in Leon County, but in your community, they can come right by. And the reason why we know that this is so problematic is the stigma that is associated. There's a shame associated with substance use and alcohol misuse. And sometimes it is just having a private conversation in a safe space. And absolutely, today here is Crystal Strahan. She is a peer support specialist for our agency, and what we are doing is trying to provide an individual who can walk side-by-side with somebody as they're entering their recovery journey, and that's what Crystal does and the other staff members that we have.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I'll say, Mr. Chairman, texting with the sheriff, he was unaware that they were here today, so he was trying to log in so he can speak.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm hoping I can get him in.
Okay. Well, while you're trying to get him in, I do have many questions, but I'll try to relegate him to a couple.
Sure.
So I was, maybe misunderstood. I thought Narcan was something that you put, give them a shot in the arm or something.
So naloxone is the main medication, and a first responder may have that ability to do an injecting kind of a thing, but for general public, it's a nasal spray. They had to create something that was very easy for anybody to use, and so it's a nasal spray.
Okay, so next question. I guess you would have to, and I'm not medical at all, I guess you would have to give someone that medicine before they actually started to have the problem with their lungs not breathing. If it's a nasal spray, they have to breathe to get it into them.
No. So obviously, if somebody has not been breathing for a very long period of time, that's going to be problematic, because the brain has to have oxygen.
Right.
However, if you're, come upon somebody who is having some of those symptoms that you, we noted, which was the gurgly breathing, dilated pupils, unresponsive to shaking, those kinds of things, when a person is laid out, kind of like you would do for CPR, it's a nasal spray, and when you administer it, they don't, it goes.
Okay.
It goes up into the nasal. It goes up into the nasal passage, which then gets into the bloodstream and into the brain. So they, they can be not breathing, actually, when you can administer it. Obviously, you would not want to, if somebody goes without breathing for too long, it's not going to work.
Okay, that makes sense. I just, you know, I was having all kinds of questions, but you know, I'm not a medical person.
Oh, most certainly. Well, you know, this is.
How's that going to work?
This is, I mean, because most people who would go and get this or medication, one of the things we look at, which is, and I mentioned about the children with the accidental exposure, is you've got an intentional exposure and an accidental exposure. And one of the things you can do with the medication Narcan, if you have it on, in your person, in your car, or whatever, if there were an incident, which can happen with seniors, and this actually happens quite often, and I do a lot of presentations at senior citizen centers, people get prescribed this medication all the time, oral surgery, injuries. This medication does its job. It does help alleviate pain, but it's a very dangerous medication. If you're not used to it, and it says every four to six hours for pain, and someone says, well, by goodness, it says every, I'm going to take this every four hours, but their system may need it to be every seven hours or eight hours. They're layering that medication up in their system, and all it takes is one more dose for them to crash, for the opioid to take over and tell them to not breathe. So if you have naloxone, you can revive somebody. You can bring them back. A child who gets exposed, maybe there is a family member who has substances that they don't know about. A child gets them accidentally. The only way you're going to revive them is with this medication. So time is of the essence in the rural communities, which is one of the reasons why we put the stands, we've got stands that we put them around the community for free. It can take the EMS people, you know, quite some time to get to somebody in a rural environment. So if you have the naloxone, the Narcan physically with you, you can, you know, really help that person who's in that opioid poisoning event before the EMS can even reach them. So that's one of the other reasons why we kind of place these Narcan stands around various parts of the communities that we serve, so that people can access them without having to go and talk to somebody. That alleviates some of the stigma issues associated with this problem, and it also provides it to them for free. They can just swing by and grab it. So if they need it, if they have susceptible family members or friends, they can give it, because sometimes people will talk to somebody they trust, but not go in and maybe speak to somebody at an office. And so they can say, well, you know what? This might help your brother, your father, your son, whatever it is.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Sherry, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Giving a presentation. So you all are responsible for refilling the.
Yes.
Stations. And thank you for that, because I have one in each one of my first aid kits.
Yes.
From getting them out of boxes. I guess my question is, do y'all keep track of how much, how many times you have to refill the stations?
Yes.
Is it a bunch in our county?
It, Crystal can attest to that, but what we try to do is go by at least once a week and check on the stands. I know that when I did that duty, I did it once a week, and there were certain locations that would go through it faster than others, and then we kind of know that, and we kind of keep an eye on that. But Crystal, if you want to speak to how, or certain.
Cool. Hold on, Ms. Crystal.
Yes, I go by and I check on them generally every week, and as she said, there are some locations that it does go out of faster than others, and I make sure to check those more often. I have noticed in the last six months that I'm having to fill them less, which is really good. A year or two, a year and a half ago, I was putting out probably double what I'm putting out now. So that's really good. I've noticed that over the last five to six months.
For the very first time in about 25 years, so this epidemic has been around for about 25 years now, the numbers are going down for the very first time, and it means that we're saving lives. And when I talk about the numbers of overdose fatalities, so we know that these treatment options and these things that we're trying to do in the field are working and saving lives, and the ultimate goal is to get them into treatment.
Did you say the sheriff was on?
Yes, he is. I'm going to ask him to unmute right now. Hey, Deborah, you could go ahead and unmute for the sheriff.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, just to drop in on you, but I didn't know that Disc Village was going to be here. First, I want to just thank Crystal for all her hard work with Bill and Sophia, and what they're doing here in the jail. But secondly, Disc Village, we have not had a counselor here for months. I have people in the jail that are starving for counseling and, and other services that y'all provide. That's got to change. We've got to have somebody here. I know y'all are having some staffing problems, but we got to have it, because we, the people in jail are the, our biggest, our addiction problems are the ones that are in jail, and they're the ones that we can help much quicker than the ones in the community that are still trying to decide if they want to get clean. And I'm glad to hear that you're putting out less Narcan, because that also means y'all are doing a good job, as well as our enforcement actions are working as well, because I think we have to, you know, knowing that we have a zero tolerance for any kind of drug, like fentanyl, Nar, fentanyl, meth, or any of these drugs, you know, we, if it's, if it's a spec, they're going to, we're going to put them in jail, and then once they get here, then Bill and Sophia interview them to see if they won't help, and then we try to get them into services. So please, let the folks know at Disc Village, we need that counselor back here seeing these people, because months is too long. You know, we can go a few days, maybe a few weeks, but months is certainly unacceptable, and we appreciate your partnership. I'm not trying to be critical. I just want you to know how important that person is.
Yes.
To what we're trying to do here, and you know, we'd much rather have rehabilitation than incarceration.
That's right.
That saves everybody money.
Sheriff, it's not a problem. We understand the, we've been serving the communities here for over 50 years. It's just a issue that is one of the things that you, all we're talking about earlier with your EMS. It's just a struggle that we deal with as an agency. I do hope to have a rectified problem with that. We may have somebody who's a local member who is getting their masters and looks to, it's very promising, so I'm very hopeful that we'll have that rectified in the near future.
And anything we can do to help as far as what you're doing, you know, please let us know. I mean, I know Bill and Sophia work closely with your team, and I'm really proud of what they're accomplishing, and, you know, look forward to more success. And I appreciate the commissioners' support. They support what we do over here, and I couldn't do it without those men and women as well. So commissioners, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
And Michael.
Thank you, sir.
I do have one question about these. So today, I know we're doing a presentation. Are you wanting to put some of these out, or what are we doing?
So Ms. Strahan has identified certain areas that she would like to be able to put the stands that we have out into the community. So I know that that is something that she has an interest in doing, and with her familiarity with the locations, it's more strategic. And also, if you go onto the Department of Health's dashboard, you should have access. Your local health department staff should be able to get this to you. The maps, when the EMTs or the first responders put in that data where these incidents occur, you can kind of see on a map where those incidences are happening more, and then we can strategically target those areas to be more proactive about that. So the DOH data is very helpful for that.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. You said that you guys distribute these Narcans at stations within our county, and you said, I think you said they're $40 at the.
At the drugstore, they're anywhere between $45 and $50 at the drugstore.
Now, who provides the funding for you guys to be able to do this?
Well, it's just like way back when, when we got the tobacco money. So what happened was those class-action lawsuits against the pharmacies, pharmaceutical companies, the distributors, and the pharmacies, that money is what funds our ability to do this positions, and also funds for that free medication. So, and that's because they created the problem, and now they're having to pay to help solve the problem, kind of like the same funding came through with the tobacco money, for education, information, and strategies, and those kinds of things.
So basically, it says opioid settlement dollars?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
That's crazy.
The sheriff wanted to speak. He said one more thing quickly.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I know that, you know, all the deputies carry Narcan. I hope the commissioners know that, and we use it, uh, quite often. It seems like it comes in spurts, sometimes the same person two or three times. And also, some of the drug houses we've been in lately, we've found use Narcan. So they're obviously, you know, probably getting them from these kiosks. The only thing I have, there were, just make sure that wherever we put them out, the people are good with it, because initially some, like the library, initially I think was like, well, you know, I was kind of skeptical, but I think they finally decided it was okay. But just as long as the people, you know, where we put them out are good with them, uh, because definitely people are getting them, and it's evident from, like you said, the drug houses we're in, that, that they are using it. And obviously, sometimes they use it and they never even call EMS. So just, just FYI.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So where are the, where are the areas you're, that we're discussing?
Um, I had several areas that I was thinking about, possibly down by the river, the Riverwalk area. Um, maybe out towards Buddy Ward's, um, park out there that we just did. Um, the ten-foot hole, that area down there near the marina. Um, Carabel Beach, um, areas like that that are going to be easily accessible for people, but not necessarily for, um, children alone, you know, places that, you know, they're going to have adults there at all times. Um, any place that you guys think would be appropriate, um, I would be open to. I, I'm just trying to brainstorm, uh, think of any places that would be good locations to actually be able to get it out to the people that need it, or to anyone that knows someone that may need it.
Well, I know that there are several areas that probably could be put, but I guess what I was trying to hone in on is for this board. So, you know, we're saying, are we voting for four areas? Or are you at six areas you want to, I mean, you know what I'm saying? So what do we, if we do vote today, what are we voting for?
You know, I think more it's just, um, a collaboration, a partnership with the organization that provides the treatment services in your community. Um, you don't have to vote on a particular number.
Okay.
Um, we can remove the stands and move the stand, it, it totally, it's, it's a very flexible kind of a thing. Um, it doesn't require you all to put a stamp on it or anything like that. Um, if, uh, the agency put a stand somewhere and there was a person who had a problem with it, we would go and we would get the stand, it really is that easy. Um, so it doesn't require you all having to necessarily approve anything. It's just a matter of us saying, hey, we're here, this is what we're looking at doing and why. And, um, just to bring you and everybody else in the community aware, just to make everybody aware.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
So, Mr. Chairman, so what, one of the things we all have to figure out is like, let's hit the ballparks. Let's, let's talk fondness parks and rec. We'll probably get a pushback from parents where the kids use the ballpark a lot because they're going to say, well, if you put it there, out in the open in the ballpark, then you're encouraging, excuse me for this, this term, that type is going to come and, and congregate there, and we don't want them around the ballparks. I'm, I'm not saying that's a right mentality to have or thought, but I'm saying that's what we're going to do. Fonda and myself, we have to deal with that, you know? So it's one thing to put it in a concession stand, that's a good thing because very few people see it there. But to put a stand out in the open in the ballpark. But then, am I going to hear, well, they're going to break into the concession stand to get to it? You know, it's, it's, we have to find a way, all of us working together, to put it in the right spots where it's available, but yet it doesn't create a, a, a pushback. That's the right, if I can use that term.
The only other question I had, it was going to be similar to that because I know there's going to be areas, no matter where you put it in this county, how accessible is this going to be to children? And is there anything that they can be a danger for if they, you know, grab this nasal spray or whatever? You know what I mean, that's-
Not at all. Um, the American Pediatric Association has approved this medication for use for children. Uh, that four milligrams, the Narcan, the four milligrams is safe to use for children. As a matter of fact, it is what is used on children who have a exposure to an opioid poisoning incident. So, um, but it does not harm them. Uh, people will say, well, what if it's another, uh, medical emergency? Like the person, you think they're having an overdose, but it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to help them, but it's not going to hurt them. So that's the good thing about the naloxone medication is there is nothing in it that will harm anybody. And, uh, uh, its only specific use is to revive somebody who has been exposed to opioids.
Some we all work out together.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the discussion, I mean, there's already Narcan in our community.
Disc Village, y'all are on.
Yes, and we do presentations, um, I've done them for senior centers. I go to churches, I've done them before services, I've gone to Wednesday night Bible studies. I've gone to wherever the, um, um, you know, different kinds of organizations, civic clubs, Kiwanis, Rotary, I've done them all, and that is just bringing information. I'll be happy to do that with Crystal and just talk to community members, answering questions and letting people have an understanding about why. Um, most certainly can do that.
Okay, so is it something today that we could consider just turning over to staff to have the conversation with them?
Yes, yes.
And then we'll go from there, or how do y'all want to proceed?
I think that's a good way of doing it.
I mean, you know what I'm saying? I, I don't have no issue with it, I mean, that, it's, the problem's not going away. You're going to sneeze a couple of times, that aren't. Uh, I hope that's the last one for you. The, uh, it's not going away fully because for some reason, people want to continue to abuse drugs.
And that's what we have to do to help realize those problems and that those problems are addressable. That's a problem that can be solved.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I like the accessibility of it, you know, because I said, I haven't known my first aid in my vehicles. Um, just my only concern is, and it's what we've got to talk with the staff is, um, you kind of touched on it, uh, we put it in certain locations, on the parks, they invite into behavior of it, that's my only concern. And the wasteful usage, you know, your kids are in the park and they, oh, look at this, let's go spray this. You know, that's, that's my only two concerns about that, is that.
So Fonda and I will basically work with you guys as we work with Disc Village, DOH, and everybody else to get it done.
And is it okay just do as, as direction, or do we need to actually put?
No, I, I think we're good.
Thank you all for your time, this, I really appreciate it, thank you so much.
One quick thing with that, though, um, I'm fine with wherever you want to put it. I mean, if it saves one life, that was well worth it. But, um, some of the places that you had mentioned, you may want to reach out to the city because a lot of those are, you know, like Riverwalk and all that would, that's kind of out of our wheelhouse. And it might not be the right shade of color if it's in the city.
Absolutely, and that's those, um, communication is key to success. So, um, we'll make sure to do that because, um, we don't want to, you know, have it be a shock or a surprise. Obviously, a community member may not know, because, you know, you've got to get that information out there. But at least the entities that are involved with that particular location would be aware.
I think it's a wonderful thing you're doing, so.
We appreciate y'all's time so much, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day.
All right. Okay, Mr. Moreau, does anything have to be set up for our PZNA report?
Uh, Steve has to come back, I sent him out to do some inspections since it was so close at the top of the hour. So he'll be back, if we go ahead and break for lunch, he'll be back in a little while.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and do that, then we'll, we'll pick up the PZNA when we come back.
Yep.
All right.
All right.
When's it up?
Recce.